For the flag salute and for our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, as we gather today, we want to be grateful for our great work. We're very, very thankful. Even with our great work, we wish you good day. As we gather today, we're kind of business. He was assault. He was wisdom. He is just all the same.
Amen. I want to welcome everybody and we'll move right along here today as I see some folks interested perhaps in budget presentations. So we'll get to that in short order. Ahead of that, on our consent agenda, gentlemen, we need to add one item and that's to add a legal service agreement with, with the Cott Law Firm. And so if I had a motion honoring that amendment and the consent agenda, I would entertain it.
Sorry, I have before me a resolution nine two twenty-one. Will that be added to the agenda or is it in there and I didn't realize it? Oh, in the.
I apologize to you.
No, thank, thank you. So that's not an addition to the, we'll add that to agendas. So I'll move to prove the agenda is modified.
Okay.
Second.
That's a consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? That passes. In our general agenda, any, any changes or does a motion stand to approve it? Is there a second? I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 That has also passed. Public comment is a time for those items not on the agenda and your opportunity to bring forth a concern, an adulation, a question, whatever. And I know that we have one for sure. So Faith Heck, one of the pastors at the Nazarene Church, but who has been deeply involved in our childcare efforts. She's going to give us a little progress report and I told her we need to find a box for her to stand on. Pull that mic down Faith so you can, there you go. Okay.
I can see over the top. We're good. So my name is Faith and I just want to first thank you for helping us to get the funding to open up our daycare. Just wanted to give you a little progress report. State came out last week and looked at everything. Everything's good to go. We had just a couple of things to fix. One being the fire marshal report had a little discrepancy between it and our layout. So we are, I immediately emailed all the information over to them. So hopefully this morning or this week we'll be able to get that straightened out and then they will give us, the state will give us our temporary license. So our projected date is July twelfth to open and I'm hoping we can still maintain that. So that's that.
And you will serve coffee and punch or something?
Absolutely.
Anyone who wants to come and take a look.
Absolutely. Take good tour.
Questions? Go ahead Lon.
I know this is public comment, but I do, just for point of order Faith and we're excited with you to get that open. I know Tim Fields worked on that.
Yes.
Years before you joined us in this community. But remind me, how many daycare slots and what kind of hours are you going to serve?
We will have fifty-eight daycare slots. We'll be six thirty till five thirty. And it's, yeah, Monday through Friday. So I've already talked to about the parents of forty children already and we have fifteen, twelve. We have twelve applications in hand.
That's great.
Yeah, yeah. Excited.
Any other questions?
No, I'd just like to congratulate Faith. I've visited your facility several times and this is the kind of momentum we need. We're getting American Rescue Plan funds and one of the mandate, encouragements, if not mandates, is to develop childcare solutions. So I'm hoping we can leverage what you're doing there to get this to the next level. So, and I continue to be appalled by the state of Kansas, the way they hold this process up. Thank you for your persistence.
You're welcome.
I have a comment and in the interest of transparency, I am a member of the Nazarene Church. So I'm speaking as a member, but also as a member of the county commission. It's on. I've, she, she reminded me. Can, I'll lean into the mic. The, the HECs came to Garden City, what, about a year ago? Just.
August, August, a year ago, yes.
Yeah, from Webb City, Missouri and bless her heart, she and her husband got involved in the community in not only the effort she's reporting today, but, but Nathan serves on the Finney County Committee on Aging and on our area planning commission. And, and yesterday he was reporting helping some other churches get AEDs. I mean, there's something all the time. So it's exciting to have you in our community and we appreciate all that you're doing.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
Okay, anyone else with a public comment? Something not on the agenda? Well, Jerry? Wait a minute. I see Matt back there raising his hand. Hang on just a minute, please.
Did all but hold his hands up.
We don't know who you are, Matt. So would you state your name for the.
Yeah, sure. Hi, I'm Matt Allen. I'm the city manager for the city of Garden City. Thanks for allowing me the time to speak with you commissioners. I just wanted to give you a copy of, at this point, a mature draft. There is one edit before we go to final copy. That'll be a little bit harder stock and slicker cover that we plan on having our commissioners or maybe some staff members equipped. Should you invite us to join alongside your presentations during the sales tax, not lost on you, but maybe not common knowledge among voters in Finney County? When you seek a sales tax ballot issue, about forty-seven percent of that comes as unobligated funds to the city of Garden City and the balance of that, the balance of that, most of the balance of that then back to the city of Holcomb as well. So it's part of state statute, half of a sales tax generated countywide is distributed then to municipalities within that city based on a formula of population of the city and sales tax generated within the corporate limits of those cities. So that in Finney County, that means a really big portion comes to the city of Garden City. Anytime you've gone and sought a sales tax ballot issue that would leave an unobligated portion, the city of Garden City has felt a responsibility to share facts publicly about how that money's spent. In short, it's a general fund revenue along with most of the mills levied for property tax for, by the city of Garden City, as well as some, some utility fund franchise, or franchise fees that are paid to utilities that aren't the city of Garden Cities, like the gas company or the phone companies, and also the city utilities themselves pay that, those franchise fees in. Municipal court revenues, building permits and a whole host of other dog tags and smaller fees. All that comes into the general fund revenue pot. The policy position of the city commission for decades has been to lean a little bit harder on sales tax than property tax for a couple of reasons. One, we are a regional city. Our services that we provide like police, fire, road improvements, parks, are enjoyed by a regional community, not just the people that live inside the corporate limits of the city. Therefore, it would stand to reason that some of that, the cost for providing those services would be passed on to those that come and visit here and shop here. The second is it grows at a pace, which allows the city commission to stabilize property tax. And the term property tax stabilization has really been what we've used for reauthorizing our own sales tax that's, that's unobligated and also the one that we've used in past county, county bond issues or county sales tax issues for some capital improvements that you've done. In your reauthorization, you're using that language as well. And so I know you'll be out talking about what that means in county government. In city government, it means police, fire, Lee Richardson Zoo, transportation projects, parks and recreation. And those five things are, are how that money's spent. The percentages on the front of this brochure, thirteen, little under fourteen percent for fire department, forty percent for police department and municipal court, just under nineteen percent. And you hear some of that activity out there right now. A little under nineteen percent for transportation improvements, a little under nine percent for Lee Richardson Zoo. That's the percentage of expense in our general fund. And so what's not on there is parks and recreation. A couple of reasons there. One, we just combined recreation. We don't have an adopted budget. We're currently working on an amended budget where we have the now blended Parks and Recreation, a little bit more traditional model of Parks and Recreation for our municipal government. And also there are some non-tax funds that do, that do recreation and parks. So that one gets a little bit confusing, but there is a portion of that, kind of the baseline maintenance, baseline programming that shows up in the general fund. We show some equivalence. You all are fully aware. So what happens if this doesn't pass? The city commission would be left with two choices to make up around a million dollars plus or minus in the general fund revenue that wasn't there. You would either reduce services an equivalent amount or you would raise property tax equivalent amount. Your material does a fantastic job of telling that story for the city of Garden City and the city of Holcomb and Finney County residents that live in unincorporated areas. Would like to call attention to those mill, the mill equivalent of what a property tax increase is. If you live inside the city limits of the city of Garden City, this is a big deal because it's not only that piece, it's the county piece too. You add those two things together. And if both governments were to say, you know what, we don't believe we can reduce services in that amount. We're going to increase the only other revenue option we have. That's going to be a sizable mill increase. Even more impactful if you live in the city of Holcomb. The dollar equivalent for them and what that translates to in property tax for each individual property taxpayer is, is significant. So these show what would happen if you did reduce services. City of Garden City Police Department, about seventy-ish sworn officers, few more than that. You would have to reduce by twelve, the number of officers. You'd have to reduce by thirteen firefighters for a department that right now stands at, I think, thirty-six to thirty-eight firefighters. It would be a fifty percent reduction in the zoo's maintenance expenses, the equivalent of that. Really, you couldn't reduce our maintenance expenses by, by fifty percent. It would be, and you can't convince the animals that they're going to have to eat less. I mean, they're going to, they're going to do what they need to do. It would, it would involve divesting of some of our curation in, at Lee Richardson Zoo. One thing that we're going to change, it says two hundred thousand dollar reduction. I'm not going to suggest that a million dollars in revenue is equivalent to two hundred thousand dollars in reduction because that's, that's off by a factor of five. But we only supplement recreation programming with property tax in our, in our whole Parks and Recreation portfolio by two hundred thousand dollars. The rest is absorbed by fees. And so it's equal to five times what we spend on Parks and Recreation tax subsidy towards, towards those prob, uh, towards those, towards that area of the general fund. So we'll be glad to be alongside you when you're talking to groups to help them understand what the decision is before the community. Your, your information talks about ballot registration, you know, our info, as well as what happens if you, you know, vote yes? What happens if you vote no? And we're trying to do the same with our information as well. Any questions?
Question, but I have a comment.
Sure.
I appreciate your, your working hard on this project with us, with us, Matt. For general information tomorrow at eleven-thirty, we will make a presentation to the, what's called friendship meals at the Senior Center. And I'll do that in behalf of the county along with one Troy Unruh for your department. And then the next day, the Rotary Club at twelve noon and I will team up with Dabo.
Sounds good. It's my understanding you're going to get us a calendar of events.
And I've set then another meeting or so as other commissioners have so that we can get more organized. Some of these kind of came up quickly.
Sure.
Just reach, have a partner and.
And I think we're flexible enough to show up last minute and we're prepared with this material. But to the extent that you know some of those dates and can give us a little bit of a heads up, we'd, we'd appreciate it.
Go ahead Lon.
And Matt, thank you very much. I appreciate all that explanation and should, I should have had a little bit more of that. I'm not faulting anybody, but it's on me. I should have reached out and gotten a little bit more of that information before one of my presentations the other day. But my, my question or request to you is if you and, and any of your commissioners or staff know of groups that we should be going to, please inform Robert because I'm open to going to other groups, but I don't know what ones we should be reaching and going out to. I mean, we're trying to reach out to Holcomb and.
We already did that one.
Right, and so forth. So we're open to suggestions for meetings as well. So.
My conversations with Robert, I think you're covering the ones that seem to be the ones that have been covered in the, in the past. But you know, maybe for those listening, if you've got a, a formal or informal group, you know, the point is just to put the facts in front of voters on what this means and folks can decide for themselves whether they, you know, it's, it's something they want to support or oppose, but.
I appreciate our partnership and thank you for that information.
You're welcome. Thank you. Great. Thanks, Robert.
Matt, before you go, congratulations on the nine years of.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Very nice honor.
It was. Thanks.
Okay, Jerry. Here we go.
I'm not that tall, nor am I a preacher.
Well, no.
Okay. Well, here goes. The twenty-fifth Judicial District Nominating Commission was created with court unification in nineteen seventy-seven. In the history of the commission, Finney County has had two non-lawyer members of that commission. First was Jess Scott and he served for about twenty years. And then you guys appointed Tom Walker, who died last month. And so we have a vacancy for that position on the twenty-fifth Judicial District Nominating Commission of a non-lawyer member. The composition of that commission is twelve members, six lawyers elected by the lawyers within the district, five of whom are from Finney County. And there's going to be some turnover in that, in that election as it comes forward in twenty twenty-two. But we have six non-lawyer members, one from each of the member counties. And so the composition of a commission is really important so that you have some longevity involved, so you get some institutional knowledge. This commission has the benefit of having one who served on the Supreme Court Nominating Commission and got to see just how important non-lawyer members are to a commission in merit selection of judges. Our judicial district and the twenty-fifth judicial district is the only district in western Kansas that's nonpartisan merit selection of judges. And it's unique because the rest of western Kansas decided that we would just have free for all and whoever wants to run for judge in partisan elections can. And there's benefits to each side of that process. And I'm not here today to talk about that process, but I am here to talk about the need for you to fill Tom's vacancy because we're going to have work to do. And I think that's one of the things that as a senior member of the bar, I can come to the commission and tell you, we're going to have some resignations from our senior judges here in the district. We just, just recently filled Rickland Pierce's position and Judge Cott will be sworn in shortly. But the problem is, is that with judicial pay the way that it is, it's hard to recruit people. And then, you know, the lawyer members, to me, their job is to get out there and recruit the people that need to be judged, that have the skill and the ability. The non-lawyer members, I think, are people that need to have that ability to judge other people for the process because a sitting trial judge and a submarine commander submerged have one thing in common. The answer is no one. So it takes a very special person, I think, to be vested with that kind of authority in things that are really important to us. And if you think about what our courts do, we generally begrudge when they rule against legislative authority. We generally don't like it when they actually control the power of the state when criminal proceedings. But the fundamental fairness of the judiciary and the co-equal third branch of government, it starts here at the bottom. And here at the bottom is, is that we're building a commission that has some longevity to it. And so if you go down the list, you'll see that the oldest member is not really the oldest person, but Tim Kohart's been on that commission since it started. And he was a young banker, folks, in nineteen seventy-eight. And we have a young banker here in, in Finney County that has agreed to serve should you choose to appoint him. And the methodology to appoint someone to this commission is not set by statute. You don't have to have, take nominations or take applications. You may simply appoint. The operative statute is, is twenty, twenty-nine. The operative statute is, is twenty twenty-nine-five. The qualifications are, he must, he or she must be an elector in the county, which requires them to be above age eighteen. And they may not hold any political office or any official position in any political party. So that's it. And you must, as a commission certified before February fifteenth of twenty-twenty-two, who you're going to nominate for another four-year term. Tom's term expires March first, twenty-twenty-two. So statutorily, you must nominate and appoint prior to February first, fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two. But I'm asking you to fill that vacancy now and then make another four-year appointment in February, if that makes sense. Is there any questions on that? And the reason for it is, I think we're gonna be busy, and we being the nominating commission. And the nominating commission cannot act except on a majority of the commission. Majority of the commission requires seven votes. When you start paring down your numbers from a twelve-member committee, it gets very hard to build that consensus to get seven votes in order to make, take official action. And I suggest to you, it's better for the commission to be fully equipped, because if you have somebody sick, you have somebody on vacation, suddenly you're down to ten or nine. And then seven out of nine people must agree to do anything. Sometimes, folks, that's not easy to do. You guys work really well together, and there's, you do have your differences. Sometimes somebody steps their post in the ground and says, that's it. Well, if you have a nine-member commission with somebody sick, somebody gone and a vacancy, then you're gonna have to have not just supermajority, but seven out of nine in order to move any matter along. Judicial appointments are not fancy, they're not flowerful, they're not meaty, they're not gonna win you any votes in the next election. But they are critically important for what we do in our community. For as much as Matt was talking up here about sales tax and enjoying the business environment that we have, yes, we should be really thankful for rain, there's no doubt about that. But it's been raining on Garden City since we got out of this funk of our kids not being at school. Sales tax numbers are incredibly strong, and we have a lot of things to be thankful for. But one of the things that makes that all work, the economy, is a strong judiciary. Not a weak one, a strong one. And we need to have our commission members in place that have longevity in order to be able to reflect back on what other people's applications looked like, what made a really strong judge versus what made a person that perhaps wasn't ready. And a nominating commission is supposed to be the gatekeeper, so that the governor can't make a mistake. And the nominating commissions came about because in nineteen fifty-seven, we had a governor who wanted to be a justice of the court, so he resigned. His lieutenant governor appointed him as chief justice of the Kansas Supreme Court. And the very next year, the people of Kansas rebuild that idea. And that's how the nominating commissions came into existence, so that it's merit selection. And we chose that in unification in nineteen seventy-seven. We have four positions of district court judges in this county, one magistrate. We just filled the fourth position of the district court. We have two senior judges that are making all the noise that they're going to retire. And they've served with distinction and had wonderful legal careers. But it's time for us to be able to recruit and appoint new people. We need you to fill our, the Twenty-Fifth Judicial District Nominating Commission. And if you go down a little bit of history here, Rita Wiles is a daughter of Earl Wiles from Wichita County. He's the original member on the commission. Deborah Cutler, one of the Cleman men served for Greeley County for ever and ever. They had a sheriff's deputy in for two terms, and now Deborah Cutler, a former clerk, is in there. Kearney County had Clyde Beamer. Clyde served for a lot of years. His son Gary served for one term after Clyde's death. And then Ralph Goodnight, former mayor from Lakin, and businessman over in Lakin, serves for Kearney County. And Christine Cupp is a doctor's wife, which also is a tradition, because the first member of the commission from Scott County, non-lawyer, was a doctor's wife. And so we will have changes in the lawyer members. We have, obviously, we have an election, we have three, four positions up for election. And I know one of the members is, has retired and will be moving from our community. And with any election amongst lawyers, we oftentimes make changes, and we will. That's a little bit about the history of the nominating commission, the need to make an appointment. The young man's name that I can bring forward to you, who has agreed to serve, is Walker Frye. Walker and his wife have two children. He's been a banker with Western State Bank here for a few years. He's assistant vice president. And I think he's thirty-five, which makes him really young, I get it. And in a room full of gray-haired commissioners and a gray-haired speaker, you might say, well, he's a little green behind the ears. Well, I bet Tim Kohart was back in nineteen seventy-eight. And the institutional knowledge that Tim brings, he's interviewed and reviewed and voted and nominated and appointed more magistrates than anyone else in the commission. And if we get a, a person of suitable age and discretion, as you deem appropriate, this is completely up to the commission. This is not where anybody involved in the judiciary or the legal system or the bar tells this commission what to do. That's not the way it works. You're free to appoint anyone that you wish to. I hope that you would at least talk to them, make sure they want to serve, because this is time-consuming. It is not a lot of fun. Lon can talk to you about getting twenty or thirty applicants. I wish we had twenty or thirty applicants for the Kansas Supreme Court Nominating Commission. I serve on it now. We had eleven for the last position, eleven total in the state of Kansas, and eight of them had already applied before. So thank you for the opportunity to address the commission. There's no action that's required today, but it's something that you need to ponder, get done respectfully, so that we're up to speed when the time comes, as these retirements are likely to occur. Questions, sir?
I have a comment, Jerry. Until today, I have not heard this name as a person who is interested. So it makes me wonder how many others out there might have an interest. And maybe we need to have just a bit of time to advertise that there's an opening.
Well, certainly, I hope my presentation is broad enough to encompass anybody who wants to serve. But sometimes I don't want somebody that, that you would appoint that has a quote, "political agenda."
I understand.
Because we're nonpartisan, it's supposed to be merit selection. And yes, you're correct. However you want to go about opening it up for people to respond or inquire directly to you or to the administrator, however you guys deem appropriate, is the way to do it. And in the past, when Tom was appointed, we kind of set his name in, and everybody said, okay, you want to do this wonderful work for free and spend several days worth of reading and inquiring and attending hearings and interviews, then it really is community service and volunteer. And it, it, it carries with it a substantial limitation. You cannot be involved in politics and be on this commission.
Did you recruit this individual, Jerry?
Yes, I did. And the reason for that is, is I wanted somebody young, and I wanted somebody in a position that understood accounting and business. And I think our, our, Tom served our commission really well. He brought a lot of insight of what is going on in the community as to how the community perceived what the judges were doing. And there's plenty of other people out there that are quote, "more qualified" than, than Walker is. But we need somebody, I, I want to push some new blood on this. I really think that, and a little bit of this is Jerry, I know, but I served on this commission for twenty-eight years and was its secretary for twenty of those years. There's been three secretaries in the history of the commission. The late E. Edward Brown, who served you guys, this commission, as a behind-the-scenes counselor. And myself, and then Bill Hydman is the present secretary of the commission. So it's, it's not something that they have a great deal of turnover on. And I would hope that this appointment would lead to a lengthy two or three decades worth of service to the people of Fannie County. The non-lawyer member is to be the voice of the citizens of Fannie County.
All right. Any other comment?
One more, one more question. Which attorneys that you said were getting ready to retire, which ones on your list are you?
Well, I'm, Gene Gady has recut, retired and is moving to Wichita. Gene has served really, really well. And I don't know whether he intends to resign or fill out his term.
He's a Holcomb resident, but still Fannie County, you're still, we do another Fannie County individual?
No, that'll be determined by, excuse me, I, I interrupted you. Would you finish, sir?
No, that's fine. That's, that's attorneys get to do that one.
Correct. All the lawyers in the district. That election process, the legislature has modified. You have to certify the role to the Supreme Court of the eligible lawyer electors for the six lawyer positions. And so if Gene retires, then Justice Biles will appoint someone to finish his term through, through March one of twenty-twenty-four. But where there's going to be an election in twenty-twenty-two, the statute says that we'll have a special election to finish that term, so that we don't have a vacancy. So there will be an election, should Gene choose to retire. And he should, if he's not going to reside here. But I'm not gonna speak for Gene, but I, I bet he will, if, if he is not gonna live in the district. The other, the longest-serving lawyer on that commission is Robbie Gale from Syracuse. If he serves another term, he'll catch up with where I was four years ago, when I retired to go to the Supreme Court Nominating Commission.
Before you step down, a question for Dory. Have we received any sort of an application, notification? I'm interested from this, from Walker Frye?
No.
So would you encourage that young man, as you said, to do so, to let us know his desire?
Would a letter be sufficient?
Letter be sufficient, and then we need to have a discussion right quick, as a board of county commissioners, about is this ample, or do we want to seek other, other people with an interest? So have that person let us know.
Walker will get you a letter.
Anything else? Thank you, Jerry.
Appreciate the opportunity to address the commission. And I think that when it comes to this commission and filling this position, acting with dispatch is important. Thank you very much.
Understood. Thank you. All right. Lisa. How's your day going?
Lovely.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm gonna watch the clock. I'm Lisa Southern with Compass Behavioral Health. Thank you for allowing us to come and visit today. This is our twenty-twenty annual report. You can obviously go through it at length. Just want to highlight a few things. This is our report that is Compass as a whole. As you're aware, we serve thirteen counties. After I go through just a couple of things on here, Megan will talk a little bit more about what we do specifically to serve Fannie County, and then answer any questions that you might have. So of course, twenty-twenty was difficult for any business. Dealing with COVID and its impact on our ability to serve people was financially impactful. However, we continued services throughout the entire, entire period of time. Once the stay-at-home order was put in place, we immediately went to Zoom services. Luckily, in western Kansas, we'd already been experimenting with that due to supply and demand of staff versus client needs. So we were easily able to move to that. However, in June or July, our schedules were getting empty, because, I don't know, maybe it's western Kansas, but people here got tired of Zoom. And they said, call me back when you're live. And so we made some preparations, some changes in our buildings, and we opened back up for live services. And by about August, we were back to normal. So very proud of our ability to make those changes. We were, of course, impacted with staff being sick and some decrease in services because of that. But again, we rebounded very well. We took advantage of opportunities available to us with state funding, federal funding. We were not able to get Families First Coronavirus Response Act funding, because we do not engage in social security. We have a retirement fund for our employees. So that, that part of paying for payroll, if people were out, was not accessible to us. So again, it was our job to serve our community and to make sure employees were taken care of by continuing services as much as possible. We have some lovely stories in here, like always, of how we particularly serve people. And then we also decided to include some quotations from staff and clients about how they responded to Zoom. And so those are included in this booklet as well. One of the things unique to Fannie and Ford County is because we were so highly impacted with COVID, we received some CARES dollars to serve people for free. So as long as someone could come in and say that they were impacted in some way by COVID, which had a varying range, they were able to get free services for that. That grant money was to continue through August. We have already expended all of the money. So that just shows how many people we served and how many people were impacted by COVID. However, some of the other communities that received funding did not spend all of their money. So we're getting more of that to come to our community. And it has now been extended until May of twenty-twenty-two. So more ability to serve people without having them have that burden of paying for that service. So that has been very helpful for us in serving our community.
Good morning. My name is Megan Garcia, and I'm the Regional One Director, which includes Fannie County. During last year, we provided a little over forty-five thousand services to Fannie County residents. This includes all hours, whether that be business hours, after-hours. One of our biggest services that we do provide that I think Lisa and I are both very proud of is crisis services. So even in the middle of the night, Lisa was on call this weekend. She got a call at four in the morning, this morning, and was out doing crisis work, all of these things. So our operations do not stop. If somebody needs help, is experiencing a mental, behavioral, or emotional health crisis, we are called to serve. And it doesn't stop at five P.M., ever. So I recently had a kid, she's about nine months now. How old is my baby? Nine months? Something like that. I've also discovered the difficulties of daycare. Oh, she left. Faith left. So my daycare closes promptly at five-thirty. She prefers that my child be picked up at five-fifteen. She has a lot of sass and is very demanding. So there's even been times where I'm not on call, and I know the client that's walked in the door in crisis. So I tell them, look, sit here for ten minutes, so I can go get my kid. I'll have somebody else watch her, so then I can see you and help you. My husband works nights. He's an ICU nurse, so there's no way he can watch her. He's at work himself. And so we do things to make it work. So it's just really important that I want you guys to know that we take these services very seriously and do the best we can to provide services to all residents or anybody who walks into our door.
So last year, I believe this reflects that Compass had one thousand five hundred and fifty-six crisis services, which is daytime or nighttime. Someone who is not scheduled, who walks in somewhere and says, I need to be seen today, I'm in crisis. Seven hundred and fifty of those were in Fannie County, Garden City. This, this is our biggest service area. And with COVID, there, there was no question asked, do you have COVID? Do you have symptoms? Come back in three days after a negative test. It was, you are seen. We had people in the emergency room who could not be transferred somewhere else to an inpatient unit because they were COVID-positive. So we went in and served them there. They had daily therapy. We worked with the emergency room doctors to start medication. And about a handful of those people were able to go home in three or four days, instead of waiting for that bed to open at Larned State Hospital. We did have COVID precautions and- Uh, we did have COVID precautions in place, so there was a time, Megan said someone on call put on the whole gear and went in the room to see the person at St. Catherine Hospital. And then there were other times where we knew who had been positive for COVID, and so we were the volunteers to go and see the person because we believed the science that because we'd already had COVID, we were probably safe to be in the room with them. But we still did all, all the safety precautions, so. Again, we're very proud of what we do any day, and especially proud to share what we did in the last year. And then we've got some great things coming on, um, hopefully in the next year or so. Last, two weeks ago, Megan and I went with a sheriff's officer and a police department officer to Kansas City to start some discussions about co-responsing and what that might look like for us to be in the field with officers, um, taking care of people to hopefully avoid them having to go to the emergency room, hooking them up with services so that we can decrease the amount of time that law enforcement has to spend taking care of people that have either a social crisis, like maybe a domestic violence, or a parent-child not getting along, or a true mental health crisis where they're off their medication and not stable and potentially a danger to self or others. So we, we are hoping to see some movement with that, um, in the next year. Also, Garden City's done a really good job with, um, some liaison services with the jail. So reaching out to inmates, Megan has a little flyer that goes into all of their go-at-home packs that basically, property bags, that basically tells them how to reach us. Some of them are getting some services while they're there, and so we want them to continue those, uh, once they leave. So again, we can decrease maybe their potential for being rearrested, reincarcerated. We want to be a very good community partner to everyone that is also serving people.
All right, questions coming? Go ahead, Bill.
So in your, your revenue statement, there's a 2 million entry under, uh, federal funds, is that a PPP loan? And has that been forgiven or not?
It has not yet been forgiven. Because we are over the 2 million request, um, it's going through extra steps, um, for approval. We did hear last week, there are two community mental health centers who were also over the 2 million mark, and they were approved last week after lots of rigorous questioning and paperwork being submitted. And our CFO did get a request for some additional information last week, so we're hopeful that that process is starting for us.
And a, a second question, I was in Minneapolis over the weekend, and, and the mayor of Minneapolis spoke to our group. You know, it's one of the cities infamous for, uh, to fund the police calls. But he said that, you know, that's absolutely absurd, but that some of the 911 calls would be answered by mental health care professionals. So is, is that option available here? Uh, I realize you would like to respond maybe with law enforcement, but i- i- are calls directed right to Compass on-call people when folks call 911 in crisis?
So my experience from two weeks ago was very enlightening in terms of, you know, how much it would take for us to learn in order to do that model. Um, we had people who are doing this in other states, typically what happens, even in Johnson County, where they're very successful with this, I feel, and I feel like our law enforcement has also referenced that. But the law enforcement will go to the scene, secure the scene, realize they're not needed, and then maybe move out or decrease the number of law enforcement officers that are there, and then we come in. But the mental health facilities that are already doing this, um, talked about, you know, what you need to learn in terms of, you know, scanning the room, securing, um, like if, if you walk in and you see a gun case, which, which we might see here in western Kansas, uh, with six, six holders, and there's only four guns in there, does this person only own four guns? Or are there two somewhere I don't know about? Uh, when there's someone sitting there, um, in crisis, and they've got a whole cabinet with drawers, what's in the drawers? We don't know. Um, if they've got a steaming hot cup of coffee, what does that mean for us if they get mad? Uh, you know, there's a lot of things that we would need to do to figure out how to make ourselves, um, safe in order to do that. I, I think another way, again, our, our goal is to have law enforcement not tied up. But if you looked at where we're secure, we're secure in our building. So what's our opportunity to move this person to a more secure place where there's some help? Maybe if it was in the law enforcement lobby or something. But yeah, we, and, and even law enforcement has pointed that out. Bringing us onto the scene is one more person, they got to make sure they stay safe. So again, everyone has lots of different things we need to look at, but we're very happy we've started the discussion. We're very happy two law enforcement officers were able to go so they could hear things, um, like we heard. Yeah, so I, I, I don't know if calls will ever just go, um, to the mental health center or if law enforcement would be involved first. But we're open, we're open.
Quick one, Lisa, uh, with the changes down at the JDC, we have the Child in Need of Care addition. Um, I take it you're still involved down there?
We are, yes. Um, when they finally got the approval from the fire marshal and everything came down, I was out on maternity leave, so there'd been a little bit of gap in communication. When I got back, um, there had been a lot of kids in crisis. So yes, we send a therapist down there every Tuesday afternoon to do therapy with the children. Um, when they enter the JDC shelter, they're supposed to be doing all of our consent paperwork, the foster care worker is, so that we can start services, they get involved in our case management. So we are very heavily involved, lots of communication with Beth and Carlos and Jake, yes.
And some of their children are the most difficult, I mean, they can't find another place to put them. The last time I was on call, um, I had a girl who, when they were outside playing basketball, she picked up a tiny piece of glass and swallowed it. So she had to be taken to the ER, and I think they were able to determine that she had thrown it up before she came in. Um, but of course, she had to have a full exam to make sure she hadn't caused any damage. Um, and then they wanted to make sure that we thought she was safe to go back. So we're very pleased that the detention center was able to open that and utilize their space. Uh, but with that came some challenges, but Megan and the Garden City office have really stepped up. Again, getting a therapist over there and trying to get case management and whatever else we can get in place. Now if we can just get people back to work so that we can hire more people, that's what we need.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lisa, uh, and we, we thank you and your staff for everything you're doing, and, and definitely it's a part of the public health services that we as a county are mandated to, uh, provide in addition to our health department and so forth. My question, my specific question is with regard to suicide attempts. Uh, and, and throughout your coverage area, or even here within Fannie County, however you want to address it. But, uh, we kept hearing over the last year and a half that the isolation, that the other kinds of things were leading to more suicide attempts, not necessarily suicides, attempts. So has that been your experience over the last year and a half? And, and, uh, has there been anything special that you've had to try to do to address that, uh, particular issue?
Our crisis services were pretty consistent. Um, I think we had a lot more people who felt desperate and scared, uh, maybe still fearful, and, and that's why we have some people not returning to work. But I, I wouldn't say that we have any data to suggest that our suicide attempts were any higher than what they were before.
I will say that generally speaking, our crisis numbers are going up, um, to where Garden City alone, was that in May? Had 10 walk-in crises, uh, one day in May, I can't remember or recall the day, where 10 people who were unscheduled walked through the door and requested help immediately. So we're seeing an increase, and I think also that same month in May, we had over 100 crisis responses. So if we stay on that trajectory, that puts us way over our crisis calls when compared to pre-COVID. Um, I can't say that they were all suicide attempts, but relational poverty has been very hard on people, and Lisa can talk a little bit about that as well.
It's, it's my buzzword. Uh, well, last week it was pretty successful in talking with the Medicaid companies about approving services. Um, one of the things we really love to do is have a summer program so that children have structure and skill building. Um, and because our numbers were so la- low last year because of COVID, you know, we were concerned if we come back and say we need to serve 40 kids, and they're like, well, those 40 survived okay last year, so we don't think we should have to. They said if, if we use tackling relational poverty as a treatment goal, they, they will approve the service. So i- it's just examining, um, the way, you know, people not working, people not going to school have been impacted, their social skills, uh, their social network has been decreased because of that. And again, the urgency of why kids need to be in school and why we need to get people back to work. The longer people stay out of life, the easier it is to just stay there instead of go back.
And, and I, I don't have the training you have, but I absolutely, with that, from an observational, uh, standpoint. My other, uh, quick question, Mr. Chairman, is within this crisis, uh, part, piece of, of your services, is there any data to show that most of those people are above age 18 or under age 18? Or is it, uh, the wide spectrum, uh, and that you mentioned a minute ago of, of the crisis numbers, uh, increasing as far as demographics?
Yeah, we, we don't usually break out our services, um, by adult versus child, we just look at the entire number, so I don't know. But we always get concerned this time of the year because kids aren't in school. And it's the teachers that notice it, and I think that's where part of that 10 in one day, a lot came over from the school.
Thank you.
Right, you're welcome. Okay.
Entertainer motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to, uh, take the Compass, uh, request under advisement.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second discussion. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Lisa, thank you. Elsie. How are you today?
Good, thank you for asking. Good morning, Commissioners, thank you for the time to speak with you today. As you all can recognize, I'm not Robert Dillion with Spirit of the Plains. Um, Robert Dillion left our agency at the end of December, um, 2020. Debbie Reynolds, who is in the audience, was the interim director until I came on in April, so I've only been with CASA for a couple of months, so bear with me as we discuss CASA's services. As you all probably know, Spirit of the Plains CASA serves the 25th District here in Fannie County. Um, we also serve the surrounding counties that make up the 25th Judicial District. We serve the abused and neglected children who are involved in SNC cases, um, so we're a court-appointed service. We do not provide services if a case is not court-appointed. All of our services are provided by volunteer advocates that we train, and they undergo a 30-hours hour training, and they have to maintain four additional hours, um, every year to maintain as a CASA. We ask advocates to do an 18-month commitment because most cases in this judicial district take 18 months to reunify or resolve a move to adoption. As you will see, our budget request is, is asking for an additional $5,000. Robert did a very good job of applying for federal grants and, and received $77,000 from crime victims and VOKA. And with those grants, it, um, is quite tedious on the book. So the additional $5,000 would employ a part-time or as-needed individual to do bookkeeping for tax purposes and just support us in maintaining those grants and meeting those needs. Um, our agency in 2020 remained open throughout COVID. Um, we had appointments with clients and we maintained contact with them, we attended court through Zoom protocol. Um, and we did receive a PPP loan throughout that process. And to clarify, um, it has been completely forgiven, if that question's going to be asked. We served 63 cases last year, 116 of those, um, children, um, were involved, and we had 14 new cases throughout COVID. Just to clarify, 107 of those kids were from Fannie County. So we provide a lot more services to Fannie County than, um, the smaller areas that are in this judicial district. Our initiatives for 2021, um, are that we hired a full-time volunteer supervisor, and she is completely VOKA-funded. Um, so her position relies on the grant. We have increased our supervision efforts with advocates who carry cases, and I want to clarify that we do have a waitlist of children, and that's sitting at about 56 children. Um, we provide masks, hand sanitizer, and other PP, PPE material for, um, individuals to attend classes, and we held hybrid classes throughout, um, the worst part of the pandemic. Our goals for this next year are that we want to obtain 15 new volunteer advocates. In an effort to do that, um, in my time with CASA, we've created a website, and that should go live in this next week. We're just getting some tech issues resolved, and we've created a new email domain. And in the next five years, I would like to have a waitlist of, of advocates rather than have a waitlist of children for these services. Just to clarify, those children don't go unserved that are our waitlist, the staff do serve them. We just don't have the capacity to serve them at, um, the same level as a one-on-one volunteer advocate. Like, we go to court hearings, and we go to case plans, and we stay involved in that case. But advocates provide a better sense of a relationship, and they stay involved past the life of the case. I intend on focusing on more fundraising efforts and not focusing so much on grant dollars as fundraising is, um, more open funding and can be applied to different spectrums of our budget. And, um, I think that that's all the information that I had to prepare for you guys.
Time, you did well.
Thank you, I am nervous, as you can probably tell.
Don't be nervous. Okay, all right, questions or comments? Nope, nope, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move we take this budget under advisement.
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? If not, those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Great job, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Very good.
I do not see Chris Lund, is he hiding back there somewhere, or who is here for? There we, Chris has changed appearance.
He has.
Welcome.
Good morning, thank you for having me. Chris will not be here today, he's unable to attend, so I'm here, um, to go over our request.
Yes, for the public's sake.
Oh, my name is Miranda Under with City on a Hill. Um, City on a Hill is, our mission is to provide the best quality service of residential substance abuse treatment and outpatient services to those persons afflicted. But it's our philosophy that the ability to overcome addiction is rooted in faith. As a faith-based center, we strive to keep God, family, and self at the core of our treatment services. New techniques for treating substance abuse and helping stem the tide of addiction are in great demand. Our facilities take a holistic and faith-based approach to recovery, experiencing positive results across the board. We place a great emphasis on parenting skills, employment opportunities, and education, as well as spiritual growth. City on a Hill addresses community needs of substance abuse prevention, education, addiction treatment services, and connecting people to other community resources. So our main focus in, um, our Garden City office is outpatient services. Uh, we do a lot of assessments, DUI assessments, um, drug and alcohol evaluations for adults, men and women, as well as adolescents who are in need of services. We have done, sorry, I had my numbers somewhere. And I lost them. Um, approximately 301 evaluations, and 180 of those have been from Fannie County. Um, that's just evaluations, it doesn't include the other services that we have provided. With COVID, we were able to keep our office open. Uh, we did provide some telehealth services via Zoom, um, or another, uh, program, Doxymie, which was beneficial. Rural Kansas, it's difficult enough to find rides, uh, to get to treatment because we not only serve, you know, the city, Garden City, Fannie County, but surrounding areas as well. So we were able to stay open throughout the pandemic and provide services. We saw a decline, a slight decline, um, in services. I, but I think, um, a lot of businesses, a lot of organizations saw that as well, so. Uh, along with our outpatient services here in Fannie County, we like to, um, discuss our residential programs for women. We are the only, um, residential. We are the only um residential service um provider to women in the western half of the state. We are designated women's program, meaning we focus on women's specific needs um who have addiction and as well as trauma-informed care at our facilities. So we're able to get women into treatment um quicker um and closer to home than if we were to have to send them to the eastern side of the state. I don't know how I got everything out of order, but I managed to do that. In twenty twenty, we were able to hire additional counselors and practicum students um at all of our facilities, which is a good thing because we desperately need licensed addictions counselors out here. It's a statewide issue, there's a just a lack of addictions counselors. So any opportunity that we have to bring in a practicum student who's even the slightest bit interested in this profession, um I get excited about that because there's just an overall lack of. And in order to provide the quality services that City on a Hill takes pride in, we need to have enough counselors to provide those services. So we were able to do that. I have one who's actually um working to get her license right now, so I'm very excited about that. Uh, we've been able to open two sober living houses for women with a program specific to helping women with employment and educational goals. So we were able to do that in twenty twenty. And throughout the pandemic, we did take extra safety precautions and have been able to remain open, as I said before, and to continue to provide services.
Your services are exclusively for females, is that correct?
Um, not our Garden City office. Um, that's just our residential programs that we have. Um, we have one in Marionfall, we also have one in Liberal. But the Finney County office is an outpatient facility, and we do offer services to men and women.
I have visited your campus in Marionfall, that's kind of a neat location out there in the country.
It is, it's a, go ahead.
Budget history with Finney County is that we've had requests maybe three years, four years, and had denied funding last year. You buy uh the grace of God and some some leftover monies, if you will, from Spark funding, achieved quite a little.
We did, we did.
And we're not able to do that every year. So it'll be interesting to see where we come out on with your budget request this year.
Yes.
Anyway, appreciate.
Thank you.
Presentation, any other questions or comments?
Your sober living arrangements, does that make up quite a large percentage of your uh budget? Or is that?
As far as.
Large program, you know, for the living arrangements for the women who need a special place, I guess.
Um, it does.
Part of that of your program is that?
It not, it's not a very big portion of the program. It's um designated for women who have completed the reintegration program in Liberal and are eligible to move into housing where they get jobs and they do help pay rent, so.
Okay, anything else? I'll need a motion, guys.
I move we take this budget under advisement.
Second?
Second.
You have a motion to second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Good job, thanks.
Thank you.
Next up is the Committee on Aging, and I see Sherry, and I see Hillary, and I see Robert, and who's coming forward? Come on, Sherry.
Can you get Robert or Hillary to come forward?
You couldn't, okay.
They are here in support. Robert Sparks is the uh is our chairman this year for the Finney County Committee on Aging. So he's he's here, he's a new face for us. And then you've seen Hillary before, so, okay. Well, the Finney County Committee on Aging, we will represent two entities. One is Transit, and the other is the Senior Center. Uh, we tend to focus more on Senior Center than Transit, but um they both are are key service providers in in Finney County, so um. And um we try at the Senior Center to focus on the wants and needs of the seniors, both the wants and what the needs are as well. They want to take trips, they like going to parks and museums and landmarks and the casino. Uh, right now, we're trying to hire a driver. We need someone just to drive two to three days a month. But the key is you have to have a CDL with a passenger endorsement because of size of our buses, so. We're trying to do that. Once we have a driver, we're gonna start our trips back up, so. As far as needs, exercise, opportunity to interact with other people. But I mean, they play they play cards, eat meals, games. We partner with a lot of different entities. He's, for example, United Way, our SVP is a really key partner for us. Retired um senior volunteer program. This year, they did over thirteen hundred tax returns through the volunteer tax program. That's a lot of free tax returns. Generated for people over five hundred thousand dollars in um in refunds. So that's pretty impressive. And um in the fall, they do Medicare counseling, our SVP does in our building. And they helped over two hundred seniors over age sixty-five who have Medicare with their Medicare counseling. We also, one of our employees, Hillary, also does Medicare counseling. And I'm guessing she probably, over that uh three-month period, probably saw about thirty people as well. We serve all of Finney County. With um with Transit, I don't know if you have familiar you are, but we had um we didn't charge for fares, either either the CityLink or the the um the county buses. Uh, we were trying to look at ways to increase our ridership after we were closed. And also KDOT and the federal government started paying a hundred percent instead of seventy to eighty percent. So that allowed us to continue without incurring any um loss by doing that. And let's see, Meals on Wheels serves all of the county. We have five in-town routes and one county route. We have volunteers from all kinds of organizations who do that. We serve seventy-five nine to ninety people a day with Meals on Wheels. For some of them, that's the only contact they have. We have continued the limited contact. Uh, we started when COVID, uh the pandemic was so prominent, where we we helped people, we either took a chair and set it on their porch, or they had one or a little table, and we knock on the door, and we set their lunch down, and they pick it up. And um our drivers usually stick around and make sure someone comes out and picks it up. So we know that they're there. If they don't come out and pick it up, or the, let's say, the lunch is there from yesterday, we have an emergency contact that Patty calls to make sure that they're okay. So we were able to continue that, it's a little different. Uh, they're not inviting us in anymore for a cup of coffee, a quick cup of coffee. But we've continued to do Meals on Wheels. About twenty percent of the folks who are on Meals on Wheels receive reduced or free meals. Patty's able to do that because she does so much fundraising. And uh we had to decrease that a little bit this year from last year because um United Way, the contribution they made to Meals on Wheels was a little bit smaller. Um, in twenty twenty, we were both flexible and creative. Uh, we had to be in response to the pandemic and what the limitations were, what we could do. We were determined that um we're gonna protect the seniors and the riders and staff. So we figured out ways to do that through hand sanitizer, masks, gloves, um all of those things, social distancing. And we actually closed for a while. Uh, the buses were closed down for a couple of months. And the Senior Center was closed for a couple of months. However, we continued to provide limited services, both transportation-wise and meal-wise. Meals on Wheels continued, and also we continued meals at the center, but we developed a curbside service. So we've got a little side door on the south side. People drove up, and one of our staff went out with a meal in a baggie. Not a baggie, like a Dylan sack, wouldn't quite fit in a baggie. And people rolled the passenger window down. We sat it in the seat, we said, hey, how you doing, how's it going? Everything going all right? And so we still had that contact, and they still got their food. And you know what, we actually increased our numbers by doing that. We increased the number of people that were eating every day. We have a version of that that we're doing now. We're not taking the meals out simply because it's a staffing issue. But people who don't want to come in and eat, we have meals to go now that are readily available. They just come in um at eleven-thirty, and they walk in and they pick up their meal. The gals have it ready, and they take it home and eat. That way, we meet whatever their individual need might be. During the time that Transit was closed, one of the things that the board challenged me with was, how are you gonna continue to make sure people get to medical appointments? That they get to the pharmacy, that they have access to those things? So we've got a van that's not limited by a CDL. So people called my office and they asked for me, and they said, I need a ride to the pharmacy next Friday. I have a doctor's appointment tomorrow at three-thirty. Can you guys pick me up and take me? And so Hillary or I or Del or whoever we could find, um took that van and we picked them up, and we waited for them, or we dropped them off, and they called, and we went back and picked them up. So people were not without access to the medical services that they needed, that they counted on us for. If they were in a wheelchair or they needed the lift, then we had a couple of drivers at Transit who said, I'll drive. Just let me know when and where I need to be, and I'll come to work, and I'll give those people a ride. We'll get them where they need to go. So like I said, we try to be both flexible and creative. For for twenty-two, um actually, and for the the end of this year, we're trying to get our trips going again. Um, we are exploring new programs. Patty started a neat program not too long ago. She calls it Oh Drum It, and it's one where you have a like a big rubber ball, and it sits on a stand, and you have drumsticks, and with the music going and stuff, you you can sit down, you can stand up, and they they play to the music. They want, I've got a group of seniors that said, Sherry, can we do that at eleven o'clock? I don't want to be here at five fifteen. Our problem with doing it at eleven o'clock is it's so noisy. I said, could we take that out to the north side to the grass? So we're exploring that, again, trying to continue being flexible and creative. It's great, and you know what, it's a ton of fun. And the nice thing is you can either sit down, or you can stand up and do it. So um it really works for for almost everybody. We try to be flexible. We have a group of teachers that come in and exercise at five o'clock during the school year. They asked Patty, they said, in the summer? What can we do? She said, how about nine o'clock? So now that exercise class, instead of being at five o'clock, is at nine. So they were they were exercising this morning when we left. We actually increased the number of people by having it at nine. And sort of looking five years out, we want to refresh the Senior Center. In some respects, it looks kind of like a grocery store, but we have some weird walls that actually have carpet on them. I'm not sure why you would ever put carpet on a wall. I don't think I've ever seen it before. Um, we want to explore what it would take to have a parking lot that was concrete because a parking lot, it's just a mess. It got redone, got resurfaced, uh but it's still pretty rough. And with snow removal, it's pretty, it's pretty challenging. So that's a that's a five-year goal down the road. Um, a personal five-year goal I have for the center is to explore, what would it take for us to have a commercial kitchen? We buy our meals from the hospital, and that works okay. But if we had a commercial kitchen, it's my belief that we could we could cook those meals for the same price or less. And I think we could rent more, we could we could rent our building out more. Because we rent our building, that generates a little bit of revenue for us. And I understand we're the best buy-in town. We do have a two-hundred-dollar deposit, but then it's forty dollars an hour. And we try our hardest to give that deposit back. The only way we don't give it back is we keep forty dollars um for every extra hour that our janitor has to work to clean after after they leave. So um that is one way that we generate um a little bit of money. Now, a little bit about the budget. We operate a zero-based budget, so we really try not to have any leftovers. Um, our goal for this year was to ask you for a one percent increase. But you can do the math, and you can see, uh we actually asked for quite a bit more. We're working with the county IT. Our infrastructure in terms of IT is pretty old. Our west side of the building does not have internet. And that's kind of hard, that's where Hillary's office is, and and she does all her accounting. She does receivables and payables both. And um so we try to have um wireless internet for her, and we just don't have it, and to get that west side of the building. And then our camera system recently went completely down at the Senior Center, and the cameras are old at Transit. And so uh the county IT guys had Next Tech come in and and give us a couple of bids on what it would take to get our building um wired so that we actually have access to internet and can do the work that we need to do. And also what it would do, what it would take to increase the 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 cameras that we have with the quality and where they're at. And so they came in, and and we got bids on that. It's my understanding that they've applied for a federal grant in hopes that it will cover those costs. But in the event that it doesn't, we want to get it in our budget so that it's known that that is a need for us. The greatest of those needs is the is the is the IT wiring. Um, so we can get to the west side. So that's why you see the increase. On our capital outlay, um we're due to get two new two new county buses. The state tells us when it's time to get new buses based on the mileage they have on them. So we have actually three buses that we're retiring, two are county and one is city. So that's part of the capital outlay, uh increased cost, the uh two-hundred-seventy-five thousand, it looks like. And um right now, we're in the process of trying to sell those three old buses. And our Transit Director Rhonda worked hard with our board, and with her board also, and with KDOT to figure out, could we sell them locally instead of putting them on Purple Wave? We have some local entities, um real men, real leaders, and some other entities that are interested in purchasing those buses. If we sell the buses for more than five thousand dollars, KDOT keeps eighty percent of the total sale. If we sell them for forty-nine ninety-nine or less, then we keep all of it. So they said, as long as we have fair market, and in the last couple of years, we've we've sold them, and we've looked at what they're selling for now. And if we can sell them for forty-nine ninety-nine, that's gonna be fair market value for what those buses are. So we're trying to work on finding somewhere to sell those and keeping the money in Finney County and keeping the resource in Finney County. So that's one of the things that's going on. And I think that I'm probably close to my fifteen minutes. The one thing I didn't mention in twenty twenty is um we did get one of the PPP loans, and that was forgiven. So uh that was that was a plus for us. The first round, I didn't get the application done, and they were out of money. And then I got a note from the guy at Western State Bank, and he's like, there's more money coming. Why don't you put it in your application? And the board had approved it, so I did, and we got the money. Was fifty-five thousand, I, does that sound right, Hillary? Okay, so I was close. So what questions do you have for me or for Hillary?
Questions, guys? Comments? You did such a thorough job there, Sherry, that no question.
Well, I felt like I owed it to you because last year, I'd like to apologize now. Last year, I just didn't show up. And they told you I'd been detained, Dave thought I was across the street. I was actually a little further over east at the hospital in the emergency room. I had a ruptured brain aneurysm, and and I'm back. I'm getting real close to full time, so apologies for not being a no-show last year, and so I wanted to make sure I covered things this year.
Now, before I take a motion, I'm gonna make a quick announcement here as a observer, if you will, liaison to your board. It was interesting through COVID to watch the care of the board and the staff because they could name names, somebody that that's the only meal he's gonna get today, or she is with Meals on Wheels. We we've got to get that meal there regardless of COVID. And on the other side, somebody by name who is a uh on dialysis, and they have to be at dialysis on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and we're gonna make sure they're there. I mean, uh, people in the community don't realize the heart of that group of people working at the Senior Center to serve the the elders, so we appreciate it. Now, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move we take this uh budget under advisement.
I'll say it.
Budget request, I should say.
Motion and I have a second discussion. If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good job, Sherry.
Thank you.
We're going to take one more budget request before we have a break. And so, Steve, I see you've got half of the city here backing you up. Are they all here to make sure you do a good job or?
Yes.
Actually, I would like to start by noting that we do have several of our board members here. And I think everybody knows everybody, but I'd like each one on the board, if you don't mind, to stand up and tell the board who you are. And I'll pass these.
My name is Ray Heinemann.
Hi, Ray.
Dentist Flash Duber.
Keith Downer.
Ross Jones.
You got a, you got a, quite a bunch of folks here today, so let's, let's listen to your presentation.
All right. And we do want to say thank you for, for listening to us and for all of these other agencies, because it's impressive how much is being taken care of in Finney County. And, and we appreciate that. If you would take your hand out and turn to the first inside page, you see an old picture there at the top of Lover's Lane when it had trees and some others. And I hope you'll keep these handouts and look through those later at your leisure. The Finney County Museum is operated by the Finney County Historical Society. And the past year, as with a lot of other agencies, we've been presented with some significant challenges. Primarily, those were reduced traffic to our museum and to events and activities. And also, that was reduced opportunities for us to raise funds because we do ten to twelve fundraising events and activities a year. And we canceled a lot last year. We canceled three early yet this year. But in the present, we're in the process of returning to normal conditions and we've made a, a lot of progress toward that way. But we're still facing a few COVID consequences. The three events that we did cancel this year had an impact on fundraising and actually there's less in the way of grant support and, and payroll protection program support this year than, than there was. But we're not letting that worry us. We're looking ahead and we're focused literally on the future of celebrating the past. We're coming up on our seventy-fifth anniversary in 2023. We were founded in nineteen forty-eight and we are focused on the past, but also focusing on the future. We've had some new developments that we wanted to make you aware of. One of those is, we have some wonderful board members, twenty-two total, and you saw five here today. We're in the process slowly of reducing the size of our board from twenty-two to eighteen is kind of a, a streamlining effort. We're not going to fire anybody. That's going to be by attrition. Meanwhile, the actual membership in the historical society, from right before COVID until now, has grown from three hundred and fifty people to three hundred and ninety-five. And that's also businesses and organizations. So, we're real pleased about that. Three hundred of those three ninety-five are residents of Finney County and almost all the others are folks with some connection here, probably have moved away and, and have roots here. Throughout the COVID crisis though, we were able to retain all of our regular employees. And we did some reductions in some part-time, we, we cut some expenditures, but we did retain everyone who's regular staff. So, we were, we were proud of that. During 2020, we still saw more than twelve thousand patrons and that would be people in the museum, people attending events and activities, others participating with us, volunteering with us. In a typical year, we see twenty-eight to twenty-nine thousand. We still managed to see twelve. So, we felt like in a very challenging year, that was a pretty good success. If you go with me to the next page, you see some folks there in masks at the top. By the way, that's not recent, that's nineteen eighteen pandemic. I want to tell you a little bit about the COVID consequences we faced. Obviously, we put in a lot of Plexiglas shielding in the museum. We did a lot of social distancing. We bought a lot of hand sanitizer, masks, gloves, et cetera. We did have to close for six weeks during the statewide stay-at-home order. We were closed from March thirty-first until the eighth of June. That forced the cancellation of four of our free noon and evening history programs. We had to cancel our annual meeting and our annual Finney County Pioneer Awards, but we handled that and I'll tell you about that in a minute. We also had to cancel our Historic Homes Tour, our Evening in the Past History Reenactment, our Holiday Open House. We reduced access at the historic William Fulton House but, and opened late, but we did still go ahead and have a season there last summer. We're up again there now. We had a dramatic reduction in the scope and size of our signature event, which is the Flea Market Festival. By the way, the, the new event's coming up on the tenth of July, it'll be back to the full-fledged gathering. We had some major, major changes in the way we deliver educational programming. In a normal year, we have classroom presentations and tours that number about ninety total. Nearly every piece of that switched to distance technology. And it necessitated as a precaution for this year, a freeze in salaries, the elimination of non-essential purchases. And also, we've done everything we can to hold down costs on, on our occasional part-time folks. But there are two things the pandemic did not do to us. It did not stop us from carrying out our work, from carrying out our mission, which is preservation of the past to enlighten the future. And it did not stop us from the four major elements of that mission, and that's exhibits, education, historical research services and preservation of artifacts and other items relevant to our history. If you go to the next page, I just want to tell you some of the accomplishments that our staff, our volunteers, our board and others helped us, helped us attain. The picture at the top of that page shows our flag exhibit, which we opened with last year when we reopened the museum. In exhibits, again, one of our accomplishments was that twelve thousand visitor figure. We also hosted five exhibits in our revolving front door gallery. We had eight hundred and forty-two guests at the William Fulton House, even though we opened three weeks late for the season. That was an interesting deal. We opened on the eighth of June. The zoo where the house is located didn't open until a little later, so we had to delay the opening out there. We couldn't go out to our own property at that, at that point. We also added the antique firearms, eight, eight of those of the infamous Fliegel Gang to our true crime exhibit, plus the chair and judicial robe used by Judge Roland Tate when he presided at the clutter case murder trial in nineteen sixty. And our friends at Finney County C V B tell us that our events and activities, because we do apply for some help there, still brought about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the local economy. That's not nearly what we do every, most years, but we felt good that we managed some things there as well. In historical research, our research library answered about seventeen hundred questions. Now, some of those are quick, easy telephone things, some of those are extensive research. That's for people throughout Finney County and all around the country. We provided the Garden City Telegram's page and history, twelve of those, every year from nineteen eighteen to two thousand and five. You may recall that a few years ago, we absorbed about fifty-eight hundred volumes of books and other information from the Finney County Public Library. Those went on to shelves that were seven feet high, really about tripled the occupancy of our upstairs library. We finally managed to get the shelving braced. We were a little nervous about public access with seven-foot-high shelves in there. We got that done. We also absorbed more than twenty boxes of district court records. And so, all of that was in, in the research realm. In education and also in community history events, and that's on the next page in the center, you see Jonetta Heberly of our staff leading a cemetery tour and a couple of other activities. Our education program in a normal year serves ten to eleven thousand children. We still manage thirty-one hundred, even with no face-to-face contact. That was primarily through Zoom, Facebook and video presentations. Even with cancellations, we had more than two hundred and twenty people at our history at high noon and evening at the museum programs. All we did was say, please don't bring your lunch this time and we spaced the chairs out. We had eight hundred and fifty visitors at events and activities and meetings. We had another seven hundred and fifty-plus at a really scaled-down Flea Market Festival. We ran that without visiting vendors, but we're back to the full-fledged event, like I said, this year. We had two hundred and twenty-five people at the Seventh Annual Historic Walking Tours of Valley View Cemetery, right in the middle of COVID. That's an all-time record, so we were pleased to have that. And of course, those folks met a few characters from Finney County's past at certain grave sites throughout the, throughout the tour. We had nearly two hundred and forty people just before the COVID crisis at our Southwest Kansas Antique Appraisal Fair. We were actually the last event at the fairgrounds before things closed down. And we successfully completed our first Board of Directors election, which we do annually, by mail-in ballot. It's always been in-person before. We conducted it and it went very well. In fact, we did that again this year because that normally takes place in April and we didn't think a roomful of people seated at tables before vaccinations was really the right thing to do yet, yet in April. In artifact preservation and also facilities, we had some accomplishments there. We replaced all the lighting in our storage areas. There are five different areas inside our building and we took out forty-one original construction fluorescent fixtures and replaced those with LEDs. That's cost savings, but that also reduces ultraviolet radiation, which is a bad thing for the preservation of the artifacts in our care. We boosted the total holdings in our artifact collection to more than twenty-one thousand cataloged items. We replaced our west fire escape exit. That might, might sound like a minor thing, but we were failing fire inspections because the door was not opening properly and would not latch properly. We had to rip out the frame and put in an entirely new steel door and it's now up to standards. We relocated a large collection of historical materials that we had stored off-site. Dina Sattler, when the Telegram was in their building, had let us store things in the basement that municipal court didn't want to keep them there for us when they bought the building. So, we have relocated those to a stored, to a secured storage room in the Windsor Hotel and we did that in partnership with the Finney County Preservation Alliance. And we began the process and we're still in that now, preserving the historic and really nationally-known engine grave site of Mitchell Runnels in Valley View Cemetery. If you go out there now, the engine's gone, the concrete doesn't look too good. That will be a new granite stone with a preserved, with the engine back on, not restored, but preserved. And we're in the process right now. That's a little bit slowed down because of COVID. Apparently, it's hard to get granite cut and engraved at this point. And that's one of the few things where it really is set in stone, but we're working on that. If you go to the, the last page there, two or three pictures at the top there, you see Kent Pendergraph, one of our volunteers, working with some veteran data. You see our scaled-down Flea Market. I want to let you know what we're doing currently in 2021 and on into 2022 and probably beyond. We have, for one thing, it may be minor, but we hope it's getting a lot of notice, right out in the foyer in this building, we're now going to be annually changing and putting up a Finney County History Exhibit. We have now, this year, replaced fifty additional fluorescent fixtures with LEDs. Those are in our work and some in our exhibit areas. We're scanning images and entering information to digitize our entire database of Finney County veterans and that will eventually translate into an interactive exhibit. We're preparing a new major exhibit on the evolution of local transportation from the horse-drawn era to the twentieth century. We, very soon we hope, will be initiating exterior repairs on the Pleasant Valley One Room School that's located just west of the museum. Also, the William Fulton House that's southwest of the museum where we do tours every summer. This may not happen until next year, but it's ready for paint. And in the eighteen eighties, they didn't paint houses white. They painted them in a lot of different, varied colors and most houses had maybe three different colors. So, we hope you'll be seeing the Fulton House looking that way as well. Right now, we're repairing the irrigation system in the gardens. The house does have modern air conditioning and underground sprinkler system. Air conditioning's working, sprinkler system blew up, so we're doing some repairs there. We have finished upgrading the inventory system in our gift shop and we're staging five exhibits this year in our revolving space, the front door gallery. And I do want to hit on those real quickly. We opened this year with the hundred and sixtieth birthday of Kansas. That was followed by a twenty-fifth anniversary exhibit focusing on the Western Kansas Community Foundation. Up next, in, in August and September, we'll have a vis, an exhibit that will recall the twentieth anniversary, we're there, of the nine eleven attacks on the Pentagon and the World Trade Center. And I want to commend Dave Jones for giving us an outstanding narrative and we appreciate it of how this community reacted at that time. At Christmas, we'll have our every other holiday exhibit, Santa's Workshop. And right now, we want you to come sometime before the end of July. We have a huge clothing collection with items going all the way back to the eighteen sixties. So, we literally opened the drawers in the clothing collection and we have an exhibit right now in the front door called Unmentionables, an intimate peek at the underside of Victorian era fashion. So, we want you to come and see some corsets and binders and bloomers and pantaloons. There's also a pair of red Long Johns, so come and, come and take a look. We continue to do work on patching the west, the roof on the west portion of our building, which has some leakage problems. We are right now conducting by mail an additional giving campaign to reduce or to replace lost revenue due to events that we canceled earlier this year. We are, as I mentioned, on the tenth of July, hosting the twelfth annual Flea Market Festival, Festival of Antiques, Collectibles, Art and Crafts. We still have room for vendors. We have room for no more donated items, so anybody thinking of bringing us something, take it to Salvation Army or, or Goodwill. We will be conducting our annual pre-Labor Day Rib Sale again in September, hosting our annual history picnic early in October. We'll be doing the eighth annual Historic Walking Tours of Valley View Cemetery in mid-October. Our annual banquet, which would have been in April, has been postponed to November, I believe, the sixth. It's the first Saturday that month. We'll be giving the Finney County Pioneer Awards at that time. And we'll be hosting our Holiday Open House again in December. We had to, to cancel that last year. That's a quick rundown on what we faced, what we did, what we're doing. I just want to mention a couple of other things. The process, I think this is the second year involving the, the fiscal committee within the county with Robert and Dory and Beth and Trista. I think that's a great process. We were real encouraged by that and we think that that was a, a great first step in the process and we hope you continue that. Other than answering questions, I just want to say that we had some tough times last year. We're getting through those now and we're proud to be serving the people, businesses, organizations, governmental entities and public agencies of Finney County for seventy-three years now and county.
Okay, guys, any questions or comments? I want you to notice where old retired county commissioners ended up on that committee.
Be forewarned.
Okay, good job, Steve.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
Duly noted on the former county commissioners. I would move that we take this budget request under advisement.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passed and we're going to take a ten-minute break.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here this morning. I want to give you just a very short presentation of some of the things that we did during the pandemic and were able to continue to support the community. We started on March 17th with virtual programming. That is actually the day after school canceled. We knew that having kids not in school after spring break, we were going to probably not have kids in the library, so we decided to do all of our virtual programming. We did have virtual programming for all ages every single week. We did that clear through March of this year, so we did almost a full year of virtual programming. That was a difficult transition for our staff, but they took that on and were really, really great at that. We did curbside pickup as soon as we were able to open again. I believe we started that on June 22nd, so just a year ago tomorrow. And our hold increased over 325% from what we were doing before to what we did during the pandemic, and it has still increased now. So people are taking advantage of our online services and being able to put their books on hold and just be able to come pick them up. Curbside is still available if requested. Otherwise, people are wanting to come inside. We're really excited. We are fully open now, so we even have a couple of toys in Dorothy's room again. We also have our beam projector on, and we have so many excited kids, it's been really great. Our Hoopla Stats went sky-high through the pandemic. That's our online platform for checking out books and media. We have our summer reading program going. We were able to start in-person programming for summer reading. We had 552 people come to our Farm Animal Story Walk, which was our kickoff for summer reading. So that was all outside, and it was really great. It was really successful. We were so happy to have people back in the building and back with us. We also worked with Garden City Arts and had a permanent obstacle course put in on one of our sidewalks. Thank you for allowing us to do that. We hope to be able to have that go all the way around the building someday. We currently have 361 people participating in our summer reading program. They have 55,220 minutes read through just this first part of June. That's an average of two and a half hours per person. The really important part of summer reading is to combat the summer slide, which children lose the ability to read and some of the learning that they gained in school over the summer. Just four to six books, and we're talking picture books, beginning chapter books, smaller books, not big novels like adults would read, four to six books can combat that and prevent the summer slide. So I think we are hitting that pretty good this year. Are there any questions? I just want to give you a little kind of what's going on.
Do you talk through the programs? Do you have a little weekly program for the three-year-olds?
We do. We do. We have We Readers. It is being held outside just so kids have room to be around, and we don't have a pile of children. So we have Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday mornings. We have We Readers. We do have at least one program per age group per week during summer reading, which is less than we usually do, but it's working out really well, and we're not getting those piles of children.
It's my understanding that just recently you renewed the contract with our management company in Escap.
Library Systems and Services.
And so I see an increase in your request for 2022. Is most of that due to the new contract with the management services is the basic part of my question?
The increase is due to the contract itself. We do go up two and a half percent each year with the contract.
Escalation clause of two and a half percent?
Correct.
Thank you.
Pam, you might touch on the chances of getting the virtual reality.
Oh, well, that's not a chance anymore. It's not here yet. We look to have it by the beginning of the year, but we are getting a virtual reality setup. It's not just the, you know, you put your phone in it and put it on your face. This is the full virtual reality. Some people put it in its own special room. We don't have space for that, so we are going to be able to get it out and put it back. But because we are renewing our contract with LSNS, they are giving that as a thank you, because this is 18 years, I believe, that we will -- this is our 18th year, so we're working on our 19th year with LSNS, so it's a big thank you from them.
Pam, a quick question. How many employees are at the library?
We have 14 staff at the library right now. Three of them are part-time, the rest are full-time.
So the 14 folks work for LSNS?
Yes.
And so that the community knows, that's why we contract LSNS to not only run the library, but to provide the staff and the training and everything that goes with it. So costs do keep going up a little each year, so.
And they've.
We just renewed a contract for a five-year period, is that right, Larry? And then each year, there's a Schedule A. Take a look at what is needed for a quick adjustment and for the local board to consider, so.
You might want to touch on the Wampler Fund just a little bit where the rest of the commission.
Okay. I did bring a partnerships benefits with LSNS. If you guys are interested in seeing that, I can pass that out. It just gives a rundown of all the things that we benefit from by being partners with them. Not only do we have the 14 staff that are here, we also have an HR department that we rely on. We have an accounting department. We have the collection development team, which helps us decide what comes into our collection. So that's really helpful. And I know Larry said something about the Wampler Fund. We did receive, and this was many years ago, an endowment with Western Kansas Community Foundation from Dorothy Wampler, and we can only use those funds, those dividends that come back each year, for certain things. They have that written out in the endowment itself, and the first thing that it's always used for is for children's, whether it's programming, materials, library, the Nature Explorer Center. It always goes to children's first. Is there?
Well, and you might touch that the dividends that we receive every year varies pretty greatly.
Yes, we've gone anywhere from $34,000 to $80,000 in different years. So it can really vary. It's all dependent on the stock market and how it's invested through Western Kansas Community Foundation. We did this year look at putting in a portion of the dividends every year to offset what we ask for from the county.
Okay, thanks, Pam. I would entertain a motion there.
Mr. Chairman, I move we take this budget under advisement.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Yeah, just one quick question. So, and I understand how it can vary from 30 to 80,000. I get all that, but that's not reflected in the budget thing that's on your screen? I mean, those funds are outside of the budget worksheet?
They are, except if you look at.
I'm just trying to put it all in person.
There's a Western Kansas Community Grants line.
Oh, under that. I missed it. I saw the other.
So the other revenues, where it says 52,000, that includes the amount that the board is guaranteeing we will put from Wampler Fund into the budget.
Okay, I misunderstood that.
No, that's fine.
Thank you for that clarification.
Absolutely.
That's one sole discretion, really, of the library board.
I get, yeah, and I do get that part of it. I just wanted to keep it in context.
Yes.
Okay, everybody's questions answered. Let's take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, Pam.
Thank you. Have a nice day.
Anna, sorry to make you wait.
Good morning. That's fine. There's been a lot of other times than others who've had to wait on us, right? All right, you did have in your packet, I tried to make a pretty comprehensive review and memorandum of the Rural Opportunities Zone Program. So this program has been in place in Kansas for several years and was designed, really, to support communities, well, as you can see, communities who are experiencing depopulation. And for many years, that obviously didn't include us. We still don't think that that includes us. Our population has continued to grow, and our economy continues to grow. However, there were many counties of similar size to us who have been pushing for this program to be available in their communities for some time, and I guess from the legislature's standpoint, it was easiest to just use a population number. They're no longer requiring that your population has declined like they originally did with the first counties that were in this program. So the way the Rural Opportunities Zone Program works is that it allows folks to relocate to Kansas. They can be folks who grew up here, but they have to have been living outside of the state for at least five years and choose to come back to the community or to the state. So what they get as incentives, they get 100% state income credit for up to five years. They get, can get, student loan repayment assistance of up to $15,000. So I went through and kind of pulled out the important pieces of this from the program documents from the Department of Commerce, but local sponsors and/or counties can opt to pay that reimbursement for their student loan debts, so that's all laid out clearly in that. Um, fifty percent of the, those repayments come directly from the state of Kansas. They pull those out of the E. DIF Fund, the Economic Development Incentive Fund Program, which is funded by Kansas Lottery revenues, so. And there's different types of sponsorships available, but the county has to authorize it, or none of those other sponsorships matters. None, none of the other sponsorships can take place if the county doesn't opt to participate. So the county does not have to opt to fund any of the student loan debt, but they do have to authorize the use of the program within the county. Employers can opt to pay the sponsorship side of the student loan debt if they choose to. Um, cities could do it. You, as an employer, can choose to do it, even though you're not doing it for just any resident of the county, you can choose to do it for your own employees that you need to recruit, um, if that's the case. And Linda Lohmeyer had reached out to me last week. Um, she thought one of the tools you might use this for would be your engineer position that you're trying to recruit. This might be a good benefit to help incentivize attracting a good, strong engineer to that position. So certainly you can take play, you know, take part in it as an employer, should you choose to. And the big thing is, if you're going to participate, you have to have the resolution in to the state by June thirtieth. I went ahead and completed the resolution for you, so it is ready to go, should you opt to do that. Um, and it's in your packet, or you can choose not to. It's entirely up to you. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the program.
Questions before we consider the resolution? Bill?
Well, I, I noticed at state level, this program has had some scrutiny, and it seems like most of the beneficiaries would have come to that county anyway. I can think of a, a new physician joining us this summer who's a nurse wife would probably be, and he's from Beloit. So they have lived on the Missouri side of the line in Kansas City for more than five years. They're coming here anyway, you know, why should we pay to incentivize that group? Uh, I wonder if you have an opinion on that?
Yeah, so I would say that's very similar to the question we have about business incentives, or corporate incentives, when we're, when we're, you know, recruiting businesses to the state. Would they come without the incentive? Perhaps. Um, does the benefit of that incentive outweigh the cost? That's always the question I think we should be asking. Um, so is there, is there a tremendous benefit to you having a new physician and, and to bringing a new medical professional into the community? I would say there's a pretty significant benefit to that. And certainly we would have said that when we recruited you, Dr. Clifford. Um, but, uh, so again, I think it really all depends on how you view incentives in general. And as I said, we've not, we've been very supportive of this program from the Finney County Economic Development stand, standpoint. We've been supportive of this program because we feel like it does help to grow a lot of the rural communities around us, and those are absolutely a part of our trade area and a part of our success in Finney County. So we've been very supportive of it. We've not, um, we've not advocated for the program to be available for communities our size, because I, I like that some of those rural communities have an edge, if you will, um, by having this tool. All of that being said, I would guess that when the census results come out, we'll probably be, um, population out. Once we hit forty thousand, we're no longer eligible. So my guess is you're authorizing this for one year, but if it's one year that we get some significant benefit from, it's probably worth it. Uh, I would tell you from employer's standpoint, um, that certainly we have some larger employers who are struggling enough right now with, with getting help, that this tool could be very helpful if they were able to jump on it right away and utilize it.
Thank you, but, but we're not competing with surrounding communities as far as funding. There's not a, a limit, statewide limit?
Well, they're, yeah, they, they've, they authorize the funding, and that's in, um, that information that you have. They authorize the funding, and it's first come, first served always. Yeah.
All right.
Lana, now, we can support the, the process, but we don't have to actually fund the student loan part, portion of it, correct?
You don't have to. Again, um, I think Linda and, and Robert perhaps had visited about the potential of utilizing it as an employer, um, utilizing it for the attraction of a couple of your higher, um, educated physicians that you're having some difficulty or anticipate having some difficulty in recruiting. So from that standpoint, you would be budgeting just like an employer. You would look at it as a business, um, and you would most likely be taking that out of, of one of your employee benefits or something of that nature is where, is where that would be geared towards. Um, but no, you don't have to fund the individuals who are coming here. But by authorizing it, you're allowing, for instance, if St. Catherine Hospital had some recruitment needs or if the school district wanted to utilize it, any of those, um, individuals wanted to use it, that this authorizes them to take part in the program.
Anything else? Robert, could you give your perspective on this, please?
Sure, thank you. Uh, we're, we're, we are looking at it, uh, potentially, uh, as a draw for a county engineer, perhaps trying to enhance or entice somebody to come join us. And, uh, you did use something similar to this, uh, at the Health Department for one or two of your positions. Two, one of them was the nutritionist, if I remember correctly, and the other is, was the, I'm looking at, um... Oh, okay, yeah. PRN.
Yeah, that's not a new concept for the...
No, so, so you have used a, a similar, um, mechanism before for a couple of positions at the Health Department.
Anything else?
Well, it just seems to me it just gives the business community another option for...
Another tool, for sure. Like I said, it may be a really short-term tool, but at least we would have that advantage. Um, Bob Kreitz, our chairman of our board, is here as well, and, and would like to say a couple of words if that's okay.
Come on forward, Bob.
Thank you, appreciate that. No, I, I think you hit on something just really positive right there. It's another tool that we can use for our business communities to go out and recruit. You know, back several years ago when they did their great big restructuring of taxes, and they said, "All right, we're going to cut all of these taxes, and everybody's going to run out and get new people." Well, they went out and they got people, and we all just traded people. This is, the beauty of this is that we have to go out of state, and we have to bring someone new in. But when we do, the cost of doing that is significantly higher. And we're not going to look to you to help us recruit and fund other than give us this tool that we can use, and then the state can help us, and it offsets some of those costs. So I think if you were willing to stand behind us and say yes to this program, not only might it work for you and however you want to do it, but it'll certainly help our business communities. So we'd ask you to consider that. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate what Bob and Duane just said, and, and I'm all for trying to help our businesses out in the county. And then to Larry's point, uh, just authorizing it, uh, gives that opportunity. Uh, I'm sensitive too, to Bill's point, though, about, uh, competing with, uh, some of our surrounding counties that are in fact losing population and have lost population. And I'm not finding it right now, but it seems like there was a map in the materials. Uh, I'm trying to, what I'm trying to determine is have our area counties used ROS, uh, previously? And it seems like some of them did, uh, but I, I, just to get that on the record. Yeah, it's on the screen, yeah.
Yeah, so you've, you've got two separate maps that cover that. And this one, again, this map talks about, um, whether or not they support the student loan program. And as you can see, that's a much smaller number of counties that are supporting the student loan program. Um, again, part of that is because their employers are allowed to do that, and the county doesn't need to budget funds for that. Um, but, you know, early on in some of the, the really small, um, rural communities, the county commission was actually the one budgeting for any student loan repayment assistance. So, um, they were taking on that role, again, weighing the benefit that having the new resident was going to create other revenues for the county to offset that cost. So, yeah, good questions, though.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, if we're inclined to support this, then the resolution number is zero eight dash twenty twenty-one, and I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve that, uh, resolution.
I'll second.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. On, uh, section seven, the allocation fifteen thousand, so that's specifically for student loan repayment? Is that why that number is there? Thank you.
Question answered. Okay, all those in, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Lana. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Uh, you also will, one of the things that's noted on there, and I, I bolded it, um, as an item on there, you will have to identify who the state needs to be in contact with, um, as far as management of that project. So just be sure you incorporate that into the documents you submit. All right, thank you.
I see next up Kelly, and I don't see Linda, so Kelly, come forward.
Okay, well, I have a few items for you this morning. Um, the first one that I will be presenting is in regards to resolution number one dash nine five. This res- resolution was originally signed in January of nineteen ninety-five, designating Finney County as a smoke-free workplace. However, the language, um, in the resolution prohibited the use of tobacco cigarettes only. Today, we are asking the board to consider that the original resolution be revoked, and a new resolution number zero seven dash twenty twenty-one be adopted to include the additional language to prohibit the use of vaping and e-cigarettes also. And Donna Gershner is here. We have invited her to, um, speak a little bit on the effects of vaping and the use of e-cigarettes.
And Donna?
Hi, glad to be here. Um, I have some information here on what is in an e-cigarette aerosol, because that's what we're talking about, second and third hand. The back of you want to hand that out? Um, you'll see there are many chemicals from the list that I'm providing, and many of those chemicals cause cancer. As in cigarette smoke, uh, second-hand smoke and third-hand smoke, uh, can be attributed from vaping. All right, so that is why I'm here today to let you know this. Um, just to let you know, my education has increased in the last few months. I'm now a tobacco treatment specialist. Uh, I got my education from KU Medical Center. So if you have any tobacco questions a- at all, I am the person to talk to. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to go over is that, uh, there have been, um, some things that happened in the city in the last couple of years on passage of tobacco ordinances to include e-cigarettes. And no longer in public places, taxi cabs, limousines, restrooms, lobbies, uh, any place of employment, all city-owned parks, playgrounds, playgrounds is the, or parks and playgrounds are new. Um, and, uh, you have to be at least fifty feet away, um, in order to smoke or vape, okay? Vaping and e-cigarettes are all the same thing, along with juuling. And, uh, as you see, the many, many chemicals are very harmful. And oftentimes, people think of vaping as a liquid, a, a water vape, and it's not. It's not actually a vapor. It's actually an aerosol. What happens with an aerosol versus a vapor? Vapor disperses, it goes away. An aerosol lands, and all the chemicals with it stay there. So if you are vaping in a vehicle and get out, and then somebody else is driving that vehicle, which is a county, maybe a county-owned vehicle, then they are being exposed to those chemicals, even though nobody's in there, okay? So do you have any questions on that? I've been here before to talk about vaping and e-cigarettes, and I'm probably beating a, a dead horse here, but I think it's really important that you add e-cigarettes to your policy to protect your folks from second-hand and third-hand smoke, as you see all the different chemicals that there are. Any questions?
Questions?
Mr. Chairman, a- and I don't disagree with what you have just stated and what Kelly is asking us to, um, approve. My question is this. It seems like every time we come up with a term for something, whether it's this context or some other subject, then another term comes up in the future. So my question is this. We've got in, in the, the resolution, smoking and use of electronic cigarettes as, as the language. Is there something else that we know is out there that...
What...
This is, I, I guess, let me rephrase that. Is that universal enough to cover what we know?
I think in that situation, and I hadn't seen your resolution until today that was going before you, but I think maybe what you need to do is look at the city's resolution, because they had the same question. Am we, are we going to continue to come up, because the tobacco company has figured out a different way or a different name for the product? And what they put in here, uh, was any tobacco product in any form in or on, you know, the following outdoor or whatever. I think that's important. Any tobacco product in any form. I think that will, will eliminate them coming forward every time that there is a new tobacco product out there. Because obviously, as you know now, vaping is a tobacco product.
I believe section one of this resolution actually defines e-cigarette and...
Right.
So that, that helps to clarify it a little bit.
But in all the other sections, you know, so I'm, I'm just wanting to make sure we're universal enough that, as you just stated, you're not coming back to us in a year and saying...
Right.
We found this other thing.
Exactly.
That could happen. I, I get that.
Yeah, and when we went for, before the city, when we were getting ready to go before the city, that was a big question. Are we going to continually come back? So that's why they put in there in any form, and that protected it. So you don't see me every so often. I'll come back and see you, though. You're not rid of me.
Oh, okay. As long as you'll sing a song for us.
Sure, anytime.
So I guess, I guess, Mr. Chairman, you know, my question is that. Is, do we have language in the resolution before we would pass it that's universal enough, um, you know, to, to cover what we anticipate might be happening in the future? So that's, that, I'm not against the, the principle of what we're talking about, but I am concerned about the language that's used in the resolution.
Uh, I guess my observation is the city's prohibited dip too as well. Where our resolution, resolution does not address that. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, it depends on what you want to allow and not allow.
Just, just an observation.
You're right. Uh, the other thing that you might want to look at is, uh, you have within fifteen feet of any county entrance. Uh, the state has twenty feet. The city has fifty feet. Okay, and the reason is, is because as you come into the door, people puff before they come in, and fifteen feet away, everybody's going to go right through that. If you've got them fifty feet away, then the chance that I have to walk through, um, Lon's vaping, which I'm sure he's a heavy vapor. But it, it prevents me from doing that. So I, you really need to take a look at the distance. And like I said, I didn't have a chance to look at this until today, and, um, I would have probably pointed him a little bit differently, but that's okay. I mean, I'm here to, to support whatever they can get passed, and maybe we make some amendments later on. But, uh, it's very important that you take care of your employees, and the last thing you want, somebody to come down with cancer because they're not a smoker. And the only thing that they can contribute it is every day they walked through a puff of vape, walking into the building.
I, uh, help me with my memory. It once and while fades. I seem to recall you standing where you are sometime in the past, asking the county to adopt another resolution to stop tobacco use. Is that...
For, for anybody under twenty-one, Tobacco Twenty-One. That is exactly what I did.
Memory serves me right, I voted against that.
Yes, you did.
And I told you at the time why I voted against it, so I'm going to tell you again why I'm still opposed in theory. Now, I'm a former smoker, no longer smoke, don't advocate anybody else smokes, but I can drive to Dodge City, Donna, and go to a casino, and the smoke knock you down when you go in.
Oh, I, I, I know that exactly. I, I think that that is a travesty that our state has not made those tobacco-free, because my mother loved to go to the casino. But because she had COPD, she couldn't go to the casino, because there was way too much smoke. So you're eliminating a population when you... So you're eliminating a population when you allow people to smoke in open air or where people will gather. You know, I have the right to breathe clean air, and you're making it so I can't.
I don't disagree with that, but I have some rights on the other side, too. If I'm an American Legion commander, and that came up the last time, I know I've got to re-debate all this, but couldn't old vets smoke a cigarette while they're telling war stories in the war? And that, they got voted out, they can't do that. So my, my position is this, I guess I'm a little bit of a libertarian. People can make some decisions on their own, they don't need the county government to tell them this is a bad idea. So anyway, I'll entertain a motion if there's one to be offered here.
Mr. Chairman, I interpret this to mean a county policy for county vehicles, county employees and so forth, and not to intrude on the general public is what I'm interpreting this to be. But I still have the question about is electronic cigarette, even though it, Section one does address that, whether that's universal enough for what we're wanting to do? And then Donna just raised a good question about the distance thing, and since she hadn't seen this previously. So I would suggest, or I would move, that we table this until our next meeting and have council look at those couple of items, and maybe they're not revised, maybe they are, before it comes back to us for final approval, because I'm more inclined to vote for something that's not possibly going to be amended a month or two from now.
Second.
Motion to second, but I want to make one, either a comment or ask a question. When this talks about leased things, leased county property, to me, that includes fairgrounds facilities like grandstands and whatnot. People can't smoke there. What if they have an event they want to smoke? I mean, that's my position, do we need to tell them? So anyway, we have a motion and a second to table this, lets you kind of clean up the language and reconsider this next meeting, how's that sound? All those in favor of the motion to table say aye.
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 Thank you.
Yes.
Kelly, Columbus Day and so on.
So the second item I'm asking for consideration is to approve Columbus Day as an annual in-service and training day for all county employees for various training opportunities and the annual benefits fair. Columbus Day falls on the second Monday in October of each year. Offering continued education and accessible training opportunities is a high priority for Finney County. Our focus will be on providing annual training as well as enhanced performance training for all employees' growth. By approving this request and combining these events, this will efficiently allow employees a day on duty, but away from their respective departments for education training, and more importantly, collaboration and team building.
And is this in conjunction with our insurance carriers and some of that sort of safety?
Their safety stuff, yes, sir.
Question?
It's a national holiday now, isn't it, or, but they don't...
Right, we don't observe it as a...
Those people don't.
Eight holiday.
Yeah. Some do. I do know that we are slower that day, just because people assume we're closed, so some do observe it, some don't.
I, I really, you know, it sounds to me like it's a good use of time to do it then.
And we're needing a motion to approve closure of the county buildings.
I move that we approve the request.
Second?
Kelly, to do this.
Would I, for lack of a second?
I will second. I'm hesitant, I'll probably vote for the motion, and I'm hesitant because I think we have so many holidays already, so to speak, where we're closed and not serving people, and that troubles me a little bit, but the in-service piece of it, the educational piece and professional development, is an encouragement to me, so I'm kind of mixed my emotions about it, but...
Well, that's, you know, I'd classify that as serving people, you know, our staff is, is well-educated and well-served.
Oh, I, that's, that's what I'm saying, but that particular day, then, you know, we're not there and available, but, you know, that doesn't mean I'll vote against it, but...
In order to get a vote, I'll second it if nobody else is.
I did second.
Oh, you did, okay.
I did second.
Kevin's back there holding up a hand.
I do just have one off, although I think that her idea of maybe a day in the county and training is not designated as a holiday, because if you designate it as a holiday and you have people that are working, training, you may have to pay them days plus.
Time and a half.
Right, but I heard it mentioned about a holiday, about adding an extra holiday.
No, no, well, yeah, I maybe didn't word that quite correctly. I'm, I'm saying that we're closed another day, and being able to serve the public, but, but that's not how, that's not how it's worded here, yeah. It's, it's worded here as in-service and training day.
Being asked, are you familiar with the term a Kelly Day?
A Kelly Day? No.
It's not named after you.
No.
Airfighters term, a twenty-eight-day cycle, every twenty-eighth day was a Kelly Day, it was for training.
Oh.
And that's essentially what you're doing here, designated training day, so...
Yes.
Okay. You have a motion in a second? Need discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye on the annual Kelly Day.
Thank you.
Okay, you have...
I have one more for you.
You're just a really busy lady here today.
I am. So the third item I'm asking you to consider is requests for the purchase of a new human resource system, also known as an HRAS. Around two thousand ten, two thousand, two thousand eleven, prior to my employment with the county, Finney County had purchased Cronos for their payroll software. The software was used until August of two thousand nineteen. Early in two thousand nineteen, the county clerk and county treasurer updated their accounting system to Computer Information Concepts, otherwise known as CIC. Human Resources was provided a demonstration of CIC's payroll software. With the anticipating efficiencies by streamlining interfaces between county offices, we decided to make the move from Cronos to CIC. Now, coming up on just two years of using CIC for payroll processing, the continued inaccuracies and faulty processes of the system have proved very costly for Finney County. In just under two years, we have made over two hundred and fifty calls for support. This is an average of just over eleven calls per month. A small amount of these calls were for training, however, with CIC not offering the time clock piece, one of our largest issues continues to be the accuracy of interfacing information between the timekeeping and payroll systems. CIC offers little to no automation, non-useful reporting, and their inability to assist with their system issues and lack of communication has ultimately required that another avenue for such an important service to our employees be sought out. I researched and received quotes from three different payroll vendors, ADP, Cronos, and Paylocity. Finney County's fiscal team, as well as all human resource staff, participated in the demonstrations of each system. All three systems provide the needs for Finney County, however, my recommendation for Cronos is based, first, off their pricing being significantly less than the other vendors, and, second, we will be able to obtain Finney County's prior payroll and human resource history from the old Cronos system dating, dating back to two thousand and ten. Currently, we use time clock plus for timekeeping, CIC for payroll, civic HR for recruitment. We track FMLA and workers' compensation manually. We have no benefit system for our current employees making changes, and all new hires have a tedious process of completing many paper forms for their setup and payroll. This move to Cronos UKG will streamline recruitment, onboarding payroll, leave management, and benefits coordination into one system and all electronic. And you have been provided five documents there. One is a matrix of what was put into this analysis, and then I've put together a four-page PowerPoint. Adam, if you can get to page one of the PowerPoint.
Now, Kelly, you spoke earlier why we left Cronos, what was...
We were gonna, we thought streamlining and creating some efficiencies between interfacing between departments, and that proved to not happen.
It didn't interface well, then?
It does interface well, but CIC's strong point is not in payroll, it's more in the tax and accounting. So we, we've struggled continuously over the last couple of years.
So does this, same then as the treasurer is using, or are we going to have two different systems?
No, so the treasurer and the clerk will continue to use CIC for their tax and accounting software. I'm asking to move to a payroll software, which would be Cronos. We will have to interface back to their system, how we did in the past when we had Cronos, but CIC is not strong in the payroll software world, and we have struggled for two years and had a lot of inaccuracies and some costly processes.
Do you have anything to offer there, Robert?
Yes, after, I guess, reviewing and looking at all the data, and obviously looking at the process in which they process the payroll, we're utilizing at times, you know, one-half FTE to, on an annual basis, to process payroll. They did not use that in the past on Cronos, you're going back to it, so it's not a new system to you. In fact, the system that is being proposed through Cronos is an updated system, which helps their processing even more. Even though the overall cost, the overall cost will go up a little bit on an annual basis, what you're doing is freeing up at, at least one-fourth of a time of personnel to assist in other HR-related duties, which you don't have right now, so you're, so it's really an efficient standpoint of use of employee time and the accuracy of it. They're, they're doing a lot of manual processes that they shouldn't have to, because the current system is just not able to do it.
And through the four pages I prepared over the weekend, it goes into everything that Robert just alluded to, so I had all that outlined for you guys to go over with you this morning.
I remember very well when we got the Cronos clock system, and it proved one thing, that was what time that person stood in line waiting for it to be less than seven minutes before eight o'clock in the morning so they could clock in. And so I said, as a candidate for the commission, one of the things I would like to consider was advertising Cronos on eBay and see what we could get for it, so maybe it's improved since then. Anyway, what do we want to do here, guys? She's asking for...
Does this, your budget allow this? I mean, is this, money's coming from somewhere, or is this...
So the primary funding source, you've kind of got me off track here, because I had a presentation I was going to go through... That told all of this, so we're kind of going backwards here on the presentation. But page four of what I put together identified a primary funding source of the Employee Benefits Fund. However, I've been in contact with Jeff Stevens at iParametrics, I believe at least the expenses for this year, and Jeff also believes that those could fall under some ARPA funds due to moving to paperless, but also having the ability to track time and proper payroll expenses during a pandemic.
So you've got it pretty well covered.
I do. And I really believe that, based off the time we're spending today, and with the amount of money we're asking to spend with the new system, from what I have figured up on page three, I have a rest annual, excuse me, a rough estimated upgrade of about seven thousand dollars or five hundred and eighty-three dollars per month, and I still believe that's a little high, based on the efficiencies that we're going to gain in a system that would work appropriately.
Okay, let's entertain a motion to authorize a purchase or to do aye the purchase.
I'll move to authorize purchase of the Cronos UKG.
I'll second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor say aye.
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 You can buy it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. That's it?
That's it.
Some fellow by the name of Steve Green next up on the agenda. Officially morning, good morning to you, Steve.
Good morning, we can keep this kind of short. I appear to request a, a resolution in support of our, our Region D Homeland Security Mitigation Plan. Basically, by adopting a resolution, it gives us an avenue to do cost recovery if we're ever confronted with a catastrophic event. So that's the really drive behind that. There's eleven entities that are involved in approving resolutions for this, school board, both, both school board districts, the college, the cities, and our utilities. So you guys would fall in line, or the county would fall in line with, with those entities.
Might I make a point, Steve?
Sir.
I understand that where in years past, the Hazard Mitigation Plan was an individual county enterprise, it's now all across the state by region, and so you can expect some help from the region if you need it, and we can expect to go help somebody else in the region if they need it. Does that be a safe statement?
Yeah, yeah, but it's more based on a risk assessment and hazard analysis for potential vulnerabilities, you know, droughts, floods, things of that nature, earthquakes, and it kind of associates a cost recovery perspective to those types of events. But as stated, this provides us an avenue to reach out to FEMA to get, to, you know, to retrieve our cost if we are subjected to something of that nature.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Well, I got a question, but I'll bring it up after we vote on this.
Did we not have something similar to this a few months back, or is it only different program every year?
Well, it's, it's basically an every-five-year plan for the region, that's one of the changes. It was last done in two thousand and fifteen, and, and due to COVID, it got pushed to two thousand and twenty-one. But the plan was disseminated out in two thousand and twenty, and we're on a timeline to get it approved and to get the resolutions to endorse it by July fifteenth and get those submitted to the state. So that's really what we're asking you to do, is adopt that resolution. And as stated, it doesn't necessarily tell you how to fix the problem, but it kind of looks at the statistical vulnerability of something did happen and the costs associated with it. And some of those numbers in there, as it pertains to our utilities, we had a little pushback on that, and it was clarified through the state that no one's held accountable for those estimates, they're just kind of a baseline to work off of, again, if we're confronted with something of that nature.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the Hazard, Hazard Mitigation Plan Resolution number zero six dash two zero two one.
Second.
Motion second, need further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 You're approved.
Sir. See, the question I was going to ask you, since the governor lost her, her emergency declaration option, what better words to say it in, but what, does that affect you guys in any way, or what's...
Basically, what they did, that shuts down the state support, the EOC, the statewide EOC that was activated, that shuts them down. We still have an avenue to, to get some PPE through the state and to get some assistance, but they're not in full activation phase now because of the declarations ceased. You know, we're still looking, working through our FEMA PA grant to retrieve costs, to retrieve some of our cost, and we're working through iParametrics with that. But as far as the state support, you know, once that's, they close that out, then they're pretty much done.
Is the state in line to get more funding from the feds, or do you, nobody knows?
I think maybe Robert could...
They, they do receive some funding from this new ARPA grant, although it hasn't been determined exactly what all they're going to push out for.
Thank you, thank you.
I think we're, and we, we've... I think we're, and we, we've, we've voted on it, have we not?
Yep.
Yep.
That's correct.
Losing track here. Hang on, I'll sign it and then you'll be in business.
Thank you, I appreciate that. As stated, we're on a kind of a tight timeline to get everybody roped in here. So your participation is greatly appreciated. You guys are earning your $2 an hour today, aren't you?
Decreasing by the hour. That's okay.
There you go. Anything else, Steve?
That's it, thank you, appreciate it. I'll just get that from Dory.
Thank you. Kevin? Your turn.
All right, officially I will say I'm current Sheriff Kevin Baske. With me for the first time in 20 years, effective October 1st, will be New Fannie County Sheriff Mike Farber. So anyway, he's here with me today just because he needs to get his feet wet on what it's going to be like to address the commission on topics during his, his time. Anyway, today what we're talking about is a proposal. And hopefully I've, you have in front of you documents. What, what you should have in front of you is the 2019 pay grades for the sheriff's office. Now, there are actually 2019 pay grades for the county, but the information that we've received from the county, we have condensed how it affects for the different grades that the sheriff's office has. So, so when you look at these, these are grades for the county, but just we're only discussing the ones for the positions for the sheriff's office. The 2020 sheet that you have, that I provided you for is the information that we received from the county last year as a result of a new wage study, I think is what it was called. And we then took those new pay grades and applied them to the positions within the sheriff's office. But I think that they're likewise for positions within the county as well. The 2021 sheet that you have is the proposed new pay grades for the sheriff's office and for the positions. And that is basically, that mirrors the police department's studying new pay grades that were approved January 1st of this year. And so I think I was made aware of those, the end of last year by Chief Utes. And, and so it was at, shortly after that where I was comparing, where you can compare positions. We have some positions that the police department does, doesn't have, like the jail and food service and some of those things. But, you know, so we kind of figured those salaries comparable into, to likewise positions within the police department. So, so this is a proposed one. I did however, provide county administration early this year with the city's pay grade, it's not even a study. They've, they've approved it for all city positions. And so I've only just touched upon those that are like, that affect the sheriff's office. And, oh, thought it hurt somebody. The, the next sheet is where I compared all of the positions from the sheriff's office from the 2019 pay grade. And then the, the 2020 pay grade that is in effect right now. And then my proposed 2021, uh, well, I say proposed 2021 for 2022 unless it was approved to be effective immediately for the rest of this year. And I can talk about if that was, uh, how we would be able to fund that with current budget dollars. And then I've also got for the positions within the city and the sheriff's office that are like, I've got a city column to the far right that shows what the, the city's pay grade is for those positions. And you can see that it's likewise for what I've proposed in the 2021. And then I've also included the pay, the pay grade amounts for the city's wage plan that they have. That's also included in there. I have, um, I don't, well, I don't think that I provided it. But one of the things that, uh, that has gotten us to this point is the fact that the city has increased their pay grades for their positions. And traditionally the county has always kind of kept pace, the sheriff's office for the police department because that's our, uh, basi- basically our competition for employees. Although both of us compete for employees with businesses around Garden City or Fannie County as well as outside of Fannie County as well. And so when the city went to the new pay grades, it kind of put us at an economic disadvantage to be able to compete. And we, we can both tell you that we have lost several employees from the jail that, that we hired at $16 an hour and that we spent a lot of time and money training, hopefully for someday to go to our road patrol division or make a career out of the jail. And we've lost those folks to the city for basically about $5 an hour that they, that they took from 16 to 20, 2108, I believe is what the city's starting salary is. We have also lost, uh, I know of one employee for sure that we lost to Tyson for a significant pay increase. And we're finding it harder to recruit people from here, especially with Tyson and, uh, one of the pack, well, I'm sure it's both packing plants over in Dodge City, but both of them start their current employees out at over $21 an hour plus, sign-on bonuses, which, you know, that's very hard to compete with. I can tell you, let me, let me tell you, back in 1984, I was working at I B P, which is Tyson today. And I was making about $6.75 an hour. And I decided to apply at the sheriff's office and was hired in July of 1984. And I got a 10 cent increase. Now, 10 cents doesn't seem like much of an increase, but the fact of the matter was it was an increase. Today, if we were recruiting anybody from, from Tyson, making over $21 an hour and we were offering 16, I don't think that we would be much of an incentive for them to come to the sheriff's office. And I know that some folks may say, but sheriff's office might be a career. But I'll tell you, when I applied way back when, I wasn't looking for a career in law enforcement. I was looking for a job. I, uh, was married for about, well, not even a year at that time. And my wife was pregnant. And so I was just looking for a job that, where I could make a little bit more money. But one of the things that I found out as I was researching was, is that the sheriff's office was a really choice place to work. That's what I had found out. And at that time I found out that the county was a very choice place to work too. But the benefits that were offered and the retirement plan that was offered was, was something that wasn't on my mind at the time. And I can tell you that the great majority of people that apply with us pretty much fit that same standard as it did for me 37 years ago. The number one reason that they're looking to come to work for us or probably for any county department is hopefully to make more money than what they were making someplace else. Now, let me tell you, what kept me working for the Fannie County Sheriff's Office was the reputation of the sheriff's office and how they were thought about. Law enforcement for a long time was a well thought of profession around the country. But much greater in Fannie, Fannie County, as I discovered in my travels around the country for different training and things like that, the reputation of the county, the benefits of the county, and then the retirement, the cabers retirement system. Those are things that kept me working for the county. But that's not what attracted me to come work for the county. What did was that initial pay increase that I got from working at, at I B P. As you look at the, the, uh, summary sheet that I talked about, from the 2019 pay grades to the 2020 pay grades, you can see that a lot of the lower entry positions, and I'm going to say the sheriff's office because that's what we have, but these pay grades I believe are existent for all of the lower pay grades for Fannie County. Because we got these numbers from H R and then we just incorporated them with our different positions that we have at the sheriff's office. As you can see, many of the salaries in 2020 went down from what they were the base in 2019. I, I, I became aware of that sometime last year when these figures were sent over to us. And I know at that time it was mentioned to H R that there must have been a mistake because I've never been around a situation where a company or an organization or anything like that had actually, or a study had actually lowered the pay grades from what they were, the base pay grades from what they were the year before. And that appears that that's what they, that has happened. And several months ago, I had had an issue with offering qualified employee a higher starting pay. Well, as it turned out, I found out that the resistance was simply following county policy, which I now am aware of, that county policy allows you to offer somebody up to 25% above base pay. Okay, so even at that, I was thinking, well, I pay, start my jail deputies out at 16, which is something I went to the commission several years ago, which you guys approved that to happen. So I just assumed that the pay grade, the base pay grade for jail deputy was 16. Well, I found out that it's actually 1265. And so, uh, the increase that I had offered fell below the, the county policy of 25% above. Actually doesn't even get you to $16 an hour where we actually start them. Now, if we had the 2019 pay grades in place, then what I had offered this person would have been well within that 25% of which county policy is, which I don't have a problem with. The problem is, is the, the new base pay grade that was implemented in 2020. Now, I don't know whether you guys were aware. I know that it was brought to your attention about some of the, uh, grades went up and that there was a request for an in, for some dollars to pay to bring some people up to the bases. I remember that. But I don't know if you guys were aware that many of the positions, especially the lower positions, the bases had been lowered from what they were in 2019. I don't know if you guys were aware of that or not. But I will tell you that the, the person that I had negotiated a higher salary because of her previous experience, uh, just turned in their two week notice and they're going to go to work for somebody else, uh, um, in law enforcement. But, uh, after she put in her notice, I asked her if she would have even applied at this other place, if we would have honored what I had originally offered her. And she said no, but she felt that, uh, that we, well, it just upset her that there was no honor, honoring of what I had negotiated, which at the time I thought was within county policy. But when I look back now and saw that they were referring to this 2020 base instead of even the 2019, or even what I thought was the $16 base for jail deputies. So anyway, um, what I'm proposing, I have in my 2022 budget request have included, if you would approve the 2021 pay grades that you have in front of you, which matches the, the city's, that's included. So if there's a decision of not approving it, then I'll have to get with Robert and we'll have to adjust that budget request down because I believe it would have increased the budget by 200 something thousand dollars. To do that, the cost was actually greater than that. But in the request, we have eliminated a couple salaries pertaining to administrative level positions. Under mine and under Mike's administration, there's going to be some administrators that are going to be wearing two hats where in the past there was two separate people. So we believe that we're saving in excess between 150 to 200,000 dollars out of our budget requests by having people wear two hats instead of one. So anyway, we don't make these proposals for an increase without trying to cut some corners in some other places as well. But at the very least, if there's no interest in helping us compete with the city, with Tyson, with, with some of our other employ, employers around, which is basically who we compete with to try to bring in the, the best people that we can, that can make the best decisions and judgment calls to protect your tax dollars in the event of litigation and lawsuits, which is what we're all in. One of the things I'd like to mention too is, is that law enforcement is probably your greatest risk position that you guys have within the county as far as potential litigation and stuff. And so in my opinion, it's in the best interest that we put the best people that we possibly can in those positions and make those kind of judgments and decisions, even though we, we train them. But still, I would much rather that we try to get the best that we can to protect those future dollars from litigation and things like that. And with that said, if there's no interest in approving this request for 2021, I would at the least ask you to approve or to go back to the 2019 bases, the 2019 bases that were lowered, but still keep the 2020 ones that had been raised, but they're more of the, the upper half of the pay grades within the county. So basically I'm asking is if you don't want to approve my 2021 for the entire county, I would ask that you implement or incorporate a version of the 2019 pay grades and the 2020, whichever is greater in those grades so that we can continue to take care of our county employees the, the way that we did when I first started and the way that we did when, that kept me working here all these years when Fannie County was considered to be a choice employer of Fannie County. So I'm asking a, either approve mine, so the, the request of 2021 so that I can be competitive for employees, so that Mike can be competitive for employees, so that we're not constantly losing them to the police department and other employers, because it's cheaper to keep them than it is to find them and train them and, and all of those things. But at the very least, at least go back and reinstate what the 2019 levels were that were lowered and keep the 2020 ones that maintained or, or, or went up a little bit after that study.
Kevin, if we approved the 21 and the 22 request, wouldn't, uh, when we looked at your budget the other day, wasn't that a half a million dollar increase?
It was, but that was, there were some other things involved with that. There's, uh, there's a request after I mentioned to the committee about a public survey that we did for an increase in drug investigators because of the increase in homicides. And when I, when I talk about an increase in crime, I'm talking about the city of Garden City plus the county of Fannie. An increase in homicides, drug related, an increase in crimes and serious crimes, drug related, an increase in overdoses and those type of hospitalizations due to overdoses and things like that. So I had done a survey on Facebook several months ago because when you're seeing this, not only as a sheriff, but as a citizen of Fannie County, it just has to concern you about what's going on with all this. Well, from my point of view, the one way that I can address it in law enforcement is enforcement. And what I had told the community was, is that the way that the task force currently is, the sheriff's office has one investigator and the police department has one. But the police department has been so busy with their homicides that they very rarely have an opportunity to assist with our joint task force. So a lot of times I have two of my people, because you can't do any type of a drug investigation with one person, it's just not safe. You always go in with two. So I asked the community, I explained all this to them. And I just said, really, if we want to get serious about it, we really have to, uh, target the, the people selling drugs much stronger than what we're able, or that we have been doing for the past couple of years. Would you support a tax increase for increased drug investigator officers? And I mentioned three from the sheriff's office and three from the police department. Would give you four, eight full-time drug task investigators. So you've got four two-man teams. And trust me, the, the intel that we get, there's plenty of information and dope for us to work, but it just takes so much time. much time uh that you just can't do it with two people. It takes so much time and money and effort, and over time, these people don't work eight to five jobs. So I asked the community if they would be interested. I got about seven hundred responses, only two were negative ninety-nine point something percent of the responses where we would definitely support tax increases for this particular endeavor, because the community recognizes what's happening. Now, I'm not gonna tell you that what's happening in Fannie County is not happening everywhere it is, but what are we gonna do here? Are we going to try to address it somehow, or are we just gonna stick our heads in the sand and just do a little bit here and a little bit there, like what we're able to with what we got? And so that's why two hundred something thousand dollars of that request, Larry, of that five hundred is for those uh three drug investigators and their equipment and and those type of things. Uh the increase for this is uh on the budget request is a little over two hundred thousand as well. Um my original idea was if you guys were interested in approving this, is that you approve it effective immediately. I have, it will be uh less than probably for the remainder of this year, probably less than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the sheriff's office budget to implement this. However, we do have the funds available because we missed some timelines at the very beginning of the year to order our vehicles. Um uh our our stuff got to the state and then to our uh vehicle purchaser too late, and so we missed the the window, the timeline for it. So I have two hundred, two hundred and twenty thousand or something like that still in my budget for this year. Of course, we do have that budgeted for next year's budget for vehicles, but I also have this increased budget. However, we could pay, if you guys would approve this effective immediately, where I can immediately start being competitive with businesses in town and the police department, we have funds in our budget this year to cover the remaining year cost. And so the only thing that would have to be decided then would be the approval, if you did so, the approval of my additional request in next year's budget, which is two hundred something thousand. And then, of course, uh you'll be asked to consider three more drug investigators, which an overwhelming majority of citizens have asked for that. Uh now, how you guys would find it, I understand that there's a new taxing thi- thing in place. The tax lid no longer exists next year, so I'm not for sure. But but if I have any indication that you had to put in a re- uh an increased request in front of the taxpayers for something like this, I have no uh reason to not to believe that something like that would be passed, because the the sentiment that I get from the community is is that they want this. This is what they want. And so I have that in there. There's some increases which, since we've talked with the committee last time about some software and a shared position with the city, that may not be happening. So I need to get with the police chief to see what what they have in there. So there's a possibility that there could be some reductions still, Larry, from that original request, but still, the the two big ones are gonna be this particular deal and then the request for additional people. And then and then the next big deal is fifty thousand increase to replace our canines, because we're down to one. We've had to uh, well, I don't know if the one passed away, or if we just had to retire it for health reasons. But but what we would like to have is one canine per team, and and we have four teams, and we just have one right now. So so we have fifty thousand in the budget to replace two dogs for next year, and then there'll be an increase for twenty-five thousand in twenty twenty-three for the third one. So that will will be back to four canines. So so that's the increases for next year's budget, but mostly for the uh for this. So anyway, what I what what I would ask for you to do today is to approve the my new pay grade plan. Um I do realize um that we're asking separately from the rest of the county. However, um I would be more than overwhelmed if the rest of the county got it, was able to benefit like this, because it would, I, in my opinion, it would be very easy to do a little bit of time and ma- you know, make a proposal in front of you uh that would be equal to the city um uh because that's how, what I did. I just did this up in less than a day.
Can I please speak on behalf of the rest of the employees?
Sure. Hang on just a second, Kelly. Kevin, I think we all understand your your desire and your position, so let us seek a little bit of input and let Kelly speak if you don't mind.
Sure. Yeah.
Come on, Kelly.
So one thing that um when I saw this on the agenda, I put together some information, but I just also wanna let you know a project that I'm working on in my office um that was approved by the county administrator. Um so I looked at terminations back to October of twenty nineteen for another, um it was for some Cobra subsidy thing that I had to do. Um thirty-seven employees leaving the sheriff's office, five were involuntary. Um I sh- um show that two went to the city patrol, one went to investigations, six had moved out of town, and fifteen had other voluntary reasons, and eight of those employees were retired. Um but Mr. Reese just recently approved for me to um for a project to redo all the county job descriptions, um because those are not accurate at this time. It's about a four-month process. We had a meeting um with Sheriff Baskey, Mr. Reese and myself back on, I believe, May thirteenth, um and let him know um of this project and what our plans were for try to trying to fix the pay within Fannie County. And so I just asked for a little bit of time so that we could fix the pay for the entire county and not just one department. Um doing so causes a lot of issues with um compression and things. So this is about a four-month project to update all the job descriptions. Um we would then regrade positions, go back out to market, and make sure that things were comparable at that time, and then get this in for the twenty twenty-two budget request for a total, to take effect in twenty twenty-three. Thanks.
And and I will tell you, I was aware of that, and that's why at that time I decided to come in front of you, because there uh I understand what they're trying to do. Uh I really do. However, it w- it's not planned to be addressed until twenty twenty-three, um which puts us two years behind the city's implementation and then everybody else's who's doing it. I certainly agree that the job descriptions need to, do need to be addressed. However, um I don't know that necessarily that the two have to be together. I think you can address a a pay grade situation and then address uh job descriptions during that time or afterwards. Um so I'm I'm not sure that necessarily the two have to be together. I'm just, you know, I understood, I had that meeting and I understood where they were coming from. However, when I realized it wasn't going to happen until twenty twenty-three's budget, that's when I decided to come in front of you as an elected official to see if there'd be any consideration for us, uh something more immediate, so that we can recruit and attract, just like what the city does, and maybe retain people. I'm I'm hoping that the the base pay that I have for a jail deputy in here, if somebody, if uh the and I can tell you that we're being actively recruited from across the hall from you, Mike can confirm that. Our folks tell us that they're being approached all the time by uh the police department to recruit our people, which should make us feel good, but we need to, we need to hang on to those good people ourself. But it's very hard to hang on to them when they're making five dollars an hour or more to go work for the police department. And so if you're wondering why I have the base for a jail deputy at twenty, well, um maybe they might stay with us for a dollar an hour.
As I understand your request, you have the money this year in your budget to handle it, but our problem, Kevin, is next year. And yes, there is a new law.
Correct.
That we, they did away with the uh the budget, I don't wanna say the lid, as it was commonly called. We now have an obligation to publish and go before the voters.
Correct.
To seek additional funding above a modest, very modest increase.
Yeah, yeah.
You're more confident in the voters approving that, I guess, than I am. So.
Well, and uh how much of that particular deal would they be interested in, or parts of it would they be interested? I don't know. Dave, the, listen, I only have a few more months left as as your sheriff and everything. And and getting on your agenda, I know that this, I knew that this wasn't going to affect me. I wasn't gonna be sheriff, what, you know, when any of this was going into effect. Certainly not gonna be here in twenty twenty-three if that's when you decide to do it. But I just felt I would be remiss if I didn't think about, um I feel like all of our county employees are as equal, and that the job that they would do is just as important as what the city does. And to them, they don't understand the fiscal side of things. What they understand is appreciation for what they do from those that employ them. Um and all of them are aware of what's what's happening across the hall from them, you know, for what the city's paying their folks and recruiting, and especially when they wonder why we're openly being recruited by next door. Um and so I just felt as one of my final acts is, I just wanted to ask you guys about what I felt was the right thing to do. Um I know it's a tough decision. I know what I know what you guys are under for next year. It's different than what it has been up until this year with the tax lid and how we've been able to navigate that in different ways, and that it's gonna change next year. But uh whether you approve it or not, the request, I just felt it was important for me on behalf of the sheriff's office and the community, because that's who they work for, and that those judgments and things that all of those folks make, I just felt it was in their best interest that we try to recruit the best people we possibly can.
Under the tax lid, as we call it, there was an exclusion that you fell under.
Correct. Yeah, I understand that we won't fall under that anymore next year. Yeah, yeah. So I, yeah, I do understand. And I ask, I ask on behalf of the department, in a way, I'm asking on behalf of all county employees, but I understand that they have a plan in place to be addressed in twenty twenty-three.
I'd be disappointed if you weren't an advocate for the sheriff's department.
Right.
Do you have some other folks?
I do. I I do understand. Uh you know, I've always, I've always lobbied on behalf of county employees before. I've even offered up some some budget dollars to help with pay raises over the years for all county employees, different things like that. So I I want everybody to know, although I'm advocating today on behalf of the sheriff's office, all of the county employees at one time or another have meant a great deal to me too. And so in a way, I'm advocating, maybe you don't approve this, but maybe you guys start thinking about if there's a way to do this sooner. I don't know. Uh I would like to have all county employees be paid equally with what our counterparts of the city are, but I understand that there's a process. But but uh I'm here today on behalf of my department um and, yeah, so.
Thank you. I'll start down the line. Lon, do you have anything?
Couple of things, Mr. Chairman. Uh I was, I don't know, caught off guard, surprised, whatever the thing might be on the summary page, seeing that some base rates had actually been decreased from one year to the other. And I don't, I didn't realize that that had happened. Uh so I'm looking for an explanation on how how that would have happened from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty.
Well, I see you're asking, you're looking at me perhaps for a little bit of insight, but.
Because because you're our only employee and you can delegate it out to somebody else for the answer. But but yes, I'm looking at you because you are our administrator.
Okay. Uh I don't know whether or not Kelly can address that or or not.
Those job descriptions, sorry, those job descriptions, um the job descriptions we have now were originally done by Austin Peters back in twenty fourteen, when we went through the compensation study um in twenty nineteen with the Arnold Group. Those job descriptions were not rewritten. However, they were put on a new grade that he had set, and that was approved by the board at that time. We have known since that time, rather than to pay him to redo all the job descriptions at that time, I I wasn't in my position to understand any of the funding surrounding that then. Um however, I just know what I'm trying to do moving forward. I know the job descriptions are a mess. I know that they all need updated, they need regraded. Um but again, that goes for all county employees. We have seventy-three employees that are making under fifteen dollars an hour. And we have twelve employees who are not even making enough um to be given credit under social security. They're under the threshold for social security. So we have a lot that we need to fix, but we also have a process. Um and all that stemmed from the two different companies that did two different um pay studies for us. And then over the last couple of years, those job descriptions were not updated. So I have taken on that project now, and we'll see it through.
I if, and and I evidently missed it, if I voted for the the twenty twenty pay grade thing, because I absolutely did not realize it was decreasing base pay, you know, like this summary shows here. And if I had realized that, I would not have voted for that. So evidently, I missed a comparison, and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, I'm just making a comment here. I either missed a a comparison, uh but somehow I missed the awareness that we were actually decreasing bases, because I would not have have supported that uh unless it was a a dire budget uh need.
If I may, I believe that we had multiple, like now we only have three pay grades, I think, four?
Do you mean like this, this section?
The ranges.
No, there's, there's more than that, isn't there?
You you have three different categories within your, within your pay scale. The current spa- pay scale that you're under was approved and voted upon back in June seventeenth of twenty nineteen is when it was adopted.
But but.
And I'm not familiar with that comparative that that uh we were presented today. So I, I, you know, I'd have to get familiar with that aspect.
Well, and and I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot here.
No.
But but and I'll take as much blame for it as anybody else. But uh it seemed, and maybe the terminology is something that I'm not understanding either, because I thought there was like one through twelve or or something, uh categories or grades or.
Yeah, and we went to three different categories.
So we're talking about three, three categories?
Executive level.
And then so many grades within those categories. Is is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And then, and then here's my other thing. Uh well, fir- first of all, and I'll admit that I must have made a mistake, uh because I would not have voted for a decrease from nineteen to twenty. Uh but here's the other piece that I've learned since the time that I, um well, that that you've expressed to us, the the concern about the promising employee or future employee of a pay and and in that particular, or that specific example. But then at the KCCA uh conference in liberal a couple of weeks ago, there was a Christina Dietrich with P H R, no, wait a minute. No, her firm is HR Partners, and she's working with counties within Kansas. And the KAC sponsored her to be there as our keynote speaker on the final morning uh about uh human re- resource and employee issues. And one of her comments uh that caught my attention is pay scale should not be across the board, but rather by market. And I believe that we have different market conditions within or among the different departments, whether it be the sheriff's office, the the attorney's office, as example, where they're where they're going through law school and 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 so the additional education, uh or having CDLs uh in the public works and and so forth. So her point was, we should not be using a a pay system that puts people in categories, you know, through um but rather that we're looking at markets, which is part of the point that I'm hearing from Kevin, and I'm not supporting one or the other uh kind of thing here as far as his requests uh from a budgetary standpoint. But are we considering market versus just putting people in a category and in a certain uh place based on a particular job description?
Let me address that. Um I think if if, in the short time that I've been here, I think you know that I'm pretty methodical about what I do and in my processes. That is exactly the process that I'm trying to get you to. When I was in in here as interim, after reviewing many documents and so forth, uh one of the things that I requested of uh the the current um HR director was to upgrade the uh position descriptions. Um we're now, we're now at a point where we're we're doing that. And it's that process in essence that positions you, the county, in the future, then to look at the various professions within your organization uh that you're trying to court in on a market level. You have two department head, other department heads in here at this point in time that are struggling. You have two department head, other department heads in here at this point in time that are struggling to find, uh, positions as well, one in the healthcare.
Yeah, that's another, that's another.
And the other, in the, uh, appraiser's office, which as you are well aware, is a very unique operations within the, uh, conglomerate of a county operation. So this here is just that systematic approach to making certain that we're, uh, weighing those professions within your organization in a manner that's, um, that is market driven. And that is the basis in which I came from, that we established many years back. And that's what I'm hoping to do here as well. It, it takes in essence then, um, that arbitrariness out of it, or that emotional side out of it. And you're able then to react, uh, in, within your organization to certain pressures that you see. Public works additionally is another issue that we have. So, so those, those things is, are the, are the things that we are targeting now and we're taking steps uh, in a rational approach to, um, you know, kind of riding these, uh, issues that, that may have crept up on the county whether or not. And nobody's to blame on this. We're not pointing blame on it. We're just trying to get us to a competitive nature.
And I think maybe I can end this discussion real quick is that, uh, I don't, I'm not requesting a decision today on anything. I think it would be best to wait till after you guys have your budget workshop in July to even decide if any of this that I proposed today would be a funding consideration for two thousand twenty-two. And if at that time it was and, and you guys felt good about that, and then you wanted to make it effective immediately for us, we got the money in our two thousand twenty-one budget, but um, let's not do any considerations for a vote or an approval of anything today. Let's maybe just wait until you guys are deciding on your budget and stuff and see what you're interested in at that time.
I'm gonna tend to agree, but I'm gonna restate what you just said. We need to have a look at what we would do with the current year's budget and how that impacts next year's budget that we're going to approve. This is a little like the university system saying to the folks, if you want to give us money to build a building, that's great. But you're also going to have to give us money to, to maintain and, and take care of that building into the future.
Right.
Well, we, we need enough foresight to see what it's going to take to maintain.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I was just sitting there while I was listening to everybody speak, that it really is nonsense to ask for some type of a decision today when you guys sometime next month probably will be making a decision on budget approval for two thousand twenty-two. And why ask for something today that may not be approved for two thousand twenty-two? And so it's kind of a moot point at that point. All I'm doing today is providing you guys with information, um, uh, kind of explaining, you know, our side, but also I'm advocating on behalf of all county employees and, and so, I mean, unless you got any more questions, I, I feel I'm good.
I did. I can sue this in less than two minutes, not seven times. We have a process and I'm not going to let, real department, treasurer's department, I'm not going to pick out one department, say you get a raise and the rest of these do. We need to complete this process. It needs to be redone. I will admit that I am not in favor of picking out one department and saying you get the raise and the rest of you guys don't. I think the process needs to be redone. Faster the better, but.
And I don't have a problem with that. All I'm saying, the faster the better. The faster the better for everybody. I would be an advocate. Even after I retire, I'd, I'd advocate that on behalf of all county employees. You're welcome. Sorry. I talk a little bit more than he does.
See you guys. Colleen. Please come forward. Any days?
I did bring a friend. I'll introduce her now. Uh, this is Dana Ontiveros. Uh, she is our current, our charge nurse. She will be, uh, serving as our interim, um, direct, interim health department director. Um, during my absence and until the position is filled, she's been with the, uh, health department for the last twenty years. So, um, really awesome to have somebody with her experience to be able to serve.
Welcome to the new position.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to hearing from you. So, all right. Bring us up to speed.
Um, looks like we're pulling up the presentation. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you about the, uh, health department and, uh, update about, uh, vaccination distribution and health department initiatives. The data I'm sharing with you, uh, today was updated on Friday evening. We'll do that normal update, uh, today at end of day. Um, there are currently fourteen active cases. Um, we've had a total of six thousand one hundred and ten total positive cases. There are currently zero individuals, um, hospitalized at St. Catherine's. Uh, last week, we officially reached the longest stretch of time with zero individuals hospitalized since the beginning of the pandemic. Fifty Finney County residents have passed away due to the virus. In the subsequent, uh, slides, you'll see the, um, trends over the last year in hospitalizations, positive cases, numbers of those tested, uh, superimposed over the positives and cumulative case counting and positivity rate. Um, you'll see that still our numbers in the recent days and weeks have steadily remained low. The mass vaccination clinic has given seventeen thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven total COVID nineteen vaccinations. Approximately nine thousand ten of those are first doses and eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven are second doses. The state is currently calculating forty-three point six percent of Kansans have received a vaccine thus far. Um, you will also see our, um, times for walk-in times and then appointments at the health department to receive a vaccine as well as um, the type of vaccine that's available each day. Um, we will be hosting a collaborative vaccine clinic at First Methodist, um, unite, sorry, you, First United Methodist Church on Saturday, uh, June twenty-sixth from nine AM to noon. You can find a map and clinic details on our website and social media. We're grateful for the Methodist Church in providing their support and efforts in vaccinating the community. Um, conveniently, that is the same day as Art in the Park on Main Street. So we were hoping to attract quite a bit of activity there this coming weekend. Um, the Kansas, um, COVID's, COVID nineteen state of emergency expired on Tuesday, June fifteenth after being placed, after being in place for fifteen months. Finney County has had marked improvement over the past few months in terms of COVID nineteen positive cases, active cases and hospitalizations. The work of our residents in pr- uh, practicing preventative actions and receiving COVID nineteen vaccination has greatly contributed to maintaining these low numbers and we're grateful. Following the cessation of the state of emergency declaration and because of our consistently low numbers over the past fourteen weeks, with your approval, we would like to shift the way in which we report COVID nineteen numbers to the public. So on the COVID nineteen hub, um, we would like to update that weekly every Monday. We would like to also discontinue the situation report that we, um, post previously, um, weekly. So we would get rid of the situation report. So it puts the status level, um, indicator for the, um, county, but then go to weekly updates on the COVID, um, hub. So COVID nineteen numbers would be tracked and reported internally into the state. And if the situation of COVID nineteen drastically changes in Finney County and the risk increases, the public will be notified through normal communication channels, including our website, our Facebook page and local news media. So we usually do like that news release. Um, if you do approve scaling back to that weekly um, update of our COVID numbers, we would also publish a news release announcing this um, in the shift since we've had that over fourteen week consistently low, um, numbers. Um, we are also hosting a community health fair on Ju- July seventeenth from nine to noon at Stevens Park. The purpose of increasing awareness of resources and offer health and safety services to the community in preparation for back to school in Finney County. We are inviting community partners to join us in promoting health wa- wellness and safety to the residents of Finney County. We have a number of our community partners that are already committed and are continuing to, um, add more to the lineup. We will launch our full-scale marketing campaign today and are excited to host, uh, this event with the community on July seventeenth. Um, if any of the organizations are interested in joining us, um, we'll have some contact information that will be pushed out. Um, we are grateful for the county and community partners. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions?
Or, um, which services? Any? For vaccines, uh, typically about. Maybe ten a day. We have a lot that are appointments. You're saying that are not scheduled, they just walk in to receive it? Oh, we're roughly about. Yep. It kind of keeps kind of, uh, scaling down. We were consistently at fifty. It's kind of knocked down to about forty and now anywhere between thirty and forty.
A quick question. You're now able to give vaccinations to anybody age twelve or over who are from Finney County, correct?
Yes, sir. So, uh, Pfizer vaccines, um, we don't close it to just Finney County. It's any, anyone could come in and receive a vaccine twelve and older.
Why are they limiting, or are you limiting just to Finney County?
No, I'm saying we are not. We are not. Mm-hmm. Yep.
Anybody else? Lon?
Do you feel it takes action from this board or can you just go ahead and do your scaled back, uh, plan, the weekly notice and so forth?
Um, we would love just your blessing to create the news release that announces that. Um, I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware in case you hear any feedback.
I'm in favor of that, but I can't speak for the other four of us.
At the risk of not having to go to the Board of Health and whatnot, would you accept, uh, kind of a general agreement from this group?
In census?
Do what you want?
Sure. Sure. Okay, thank you. We'll get that published, uh, today. I sent it over to Robert for his approval as well. So. Um, the last thing that I believe that we have is, um, unless there's any other questions about health department and activities we have coming up. Um, the last thing we have then is the medical director consultation and services. So, um, essentially what's going on is we are trying to find a medical director to take over um, for the consultation and, um, agreement of services. If we do not have a medical director, we are then, um, really backed into a corner of what services we can provide. So you'd be looking at immunizations, disease investigations and, um, TB. But the health department currently functions in a much larger, um, aspect with our family planning initiatives, employee clinic. Um, we oversee medical services at JDC, um, the sheriff's department. All of our family planning are, um, walk-in clinic with our strep, UTI, um, flu tests. So basically all of our medical services. So we need to make sure that we have a medical director. The crossover and contracting with all of our insurance companies to then notify of a new medical director, signing and editing of all of the new standing orders for our clinic to operate. Um, it's a pretty lengthy process. The last time that we did the crossover from, um, Dr. Burke and, Dr. Perkins to, um, Dr. Burns, um, took us a good sixty days to get the full switch over. So what I'm asking is, is for more time to continue to look for a medical director. Um, I have asked several so far. Um, I haven't found anybody quite yet, but we're still actively looking. We have a couple of other, um, opportunities to um, look at for medical directorship as well. And we're reaching out to some of our surrounding counties, um, to their medical directors to also see if they have any interest. So.
That have to be an MD?
Yes, it does. We have nurse practitioners under our purview, um, so it has to be an MD level.
Okay, and Dr. Perkins still with Genesis?
Yes, sir.
Can't go twist his arm real hard?
I could always ask.
Anybody else want to offer anything?
I have a resignation letter in front of me here. Does, is Dr. Burns willing to continue for a few months? She doesn't want her contract renewed, but will she continue?
Yep. So, um, I reached out to her, uh, last week to ask if she was willing to, um, continue to sign on for a, um, month-by-month, um, agreement. And so she was agreeable to doing that so that the health, the health department can continue to function in this interim. So, um, we are looking for that.
I think you have the blessing of this board, Colleen, to do what you need to do.
Um, you have the signature page.
Yes, they would. Uh, the, the contract before you in essence is extending the current one on a month-to-month basis. That's quite simply what it is.
I'd accept a motion.
So move.
Second? A second? Okay, a motion, a second. Discussion. All those in favor of the month-by-month contracts, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I just wanted to also say thank you for the tremendous, uh, opportunity to serve as your health department director and local health officer. It's been an honor serving our community. I wish everyone well and I'll still be available, um, to assist with health department initiatives as needed during the interim. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Board of Governors, do we have anything that needs to be governed? Besides lunch? We'll get through Donna, or, uh, Lon, I'm sorry. Um, the wrong name. County, yeah, that's part of his. County administrators' report.
Part of my report, uh, before you is, is the reappointment, uh, of your county appraiser. Um, of course Maria has been here for quite some time and, and, um, I am recommending to the board reappointment for the next four years. Um, and I'd like to talk, I'd like to have her talk to you a little bit about some of the training efforts that she has gone through uh, in her office and bringing, um, her personnel up to speed on, on the various, um, appraisal uh, evolutions and so forth. And she did have one, one employee just recently passed a major exam. So I'll let her talk a little bit about that.
So, um, as you guys know, to become a county appraiser, you have to go through a lot of training. We, um, to get your registered mass appraiser, appraiser cer- certification. And for that, it takes a lot of classes. Um, I think it takes like a hundred and fifty hours of certain number of classes. It takes six thousand hours of actual um, working hours that you have to document, uh, and all of that. And then after you do become an RMA, uh, you do have, uh, every four years, you have to take like a hundred and twenty continuing hours of education. Um, I did, uh, just have an employee, he passed his I double A O two. Uh, he has now moved into the ag position. He's my new ag appraiser. Um, and for those classes, they can be really difficult. They're a week-long class. Um, you study for, they pack a lot of information into four days and then that, on Friday, usually you take a four-hour exam. Um, so we do a lot of training in the office. And like he had mentioned earlier, right now I do have an open position that I am looking for, that I'm having difficulty finding someone, um, to take that position. I do have a new hire that started today that filled, because I had two positions available. Um, but the issue that I, I am having and that's kind of, um, probably countywide is the pay. I've offered the position to two other people and they didn't take it because of the pay. It was just too low. Um, especially with all the information that we have to do. Um, as a county appraiser, I oversee the whole office. Um, so, but in value, and we have fifteen thousand four hundred resident. So, but in value, and we have fifteen thousand four hundred residential parcels. We have like thirty, thirty-five hundred personal property accounts and maybe sixteen hundred oil and gas renditions. So on top of all of that stuff that we have to, that we value as an office, I sign off on. But I do require my staff to actually look at that information, get the training so they're able to make that, make decisions on putting value on all those different kinds of properties. So that requires a lot of training. So that kind of gives you a little background on the county appraiser. I have been here since nineteen ninety-five, so come this July tenth, I'll be here going on twenty-six years. I've been your county appraiser since 2012. I enjoy Fannie County. I love living here in Fannie County. I've always said it to my employees, it's kind of the best of both worlds, kind of country living, and you still get a little bit of a city. We've been fortunate enough to have a budget enough for our office to be able to kind of have the big city, because we've gone electronics, so we use Surface Pros to do that. And you guys did approve last year, last year or the year before, one of the two. But we've, we've implemented Phil Mobile, which has actually helped us tremendously. It's been a little slow start, but we go out in the field and we take care of everything on our Surface Pros. And then when we come back in the field, from the field, it actually will download the information, so we don't have to do as much data entry. So it's made our, and that's when you're dealing with so much information, so many records, the data entry gets to be time-consuming. So that is a big plus, and thank you for approving that and letting us get that. We're really enjoying that. And anything else? I would really appreciate it if you guys would sign my contract and enjoy working for Fannie County.
We need to vote on this.
Yes, you do.
We need a motion to nominate.
Actually, you'll approve her.
A point.
Point.
By resolution, the number was, give me... Okay, so is that a motion, Bill?
Yes, it'd be, it'd be my pleasure to recommend for approval Resolution nine dash twenty twenty-one.
Thank you.
Have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Win it, or nominate it, or whatever you are.
Okay, thank you.
I don't want to, I don't want to disrupt activities, but Bill has a duty to leave here a little bit. Can we stop and ask for his report and then return? Get anything to report? That's it?
That's it.
All right, okay, back to County Council.
All right, very good. You heard from Kelly a little bit about some of the other activities that we have going on in the office as far as employee stuff and studies and so forth. As you can tell, Linda is not here today. She, I believe, will be back on Wednesday, if I remember correctly. Some of the things that she is working on is the Hunter's Glen loan papers. The chairman is authorized to sign that, and she should have that ready for you by the end of this week. So you can sign off on those loan documents. You do have a couple of, a couple of subdivisions out there. One of them is, let's see here, Sunset Terrace. Recall that we were having a transportation study done on that. Just received that along with the sewer study as well late last week. So we'll be reviewing it with Larry from Public Works. We'll, we'll probably do a Zoom with SMA, Slow Myer, and Hancock, who did the sewer study.
Which piece of property are we talking about?
Well, this is the one just to the east.
Just to the north of Towns Road.
Okay, all right, thank you.
By Sunset, so.
So that one's moving closer and closer to getting resolved, so we can move that project forward. The other one had to do with Country Acres. Recall that you had a request. Board made an adjustment to the requirement of the two acres. There was a meeting late Wednesday morning where I found out that the landowners, the developers, will be seeking a public water supply system for their subdivision. What that means is that under your regulations, then they can go down to a one-acre lot. So the issue of the two-acre thing seems to have subsided, but I believe Linda still has a follow-up with, with you at the next meeting on, on that, to resolve that issue as well. Of course, we're still going through the process of buttoning up the county budget. We'll have something to you here this next meeting, so we can begin that review process and kind of walk you through what steps as far as the revenue-neutral issues that, that we need to go through in this first year. A little bit of a change, but, but nothing extraordinary. Any questions for me? We, we may need to be here for the whole day on that. It's trying to get that.
Question about here, who? Larry said he will not be here the sixth. Is there anybody else going to be absent?
I'll be, I think, let me look real quick, but I, I think I had moved that to the sixth.
And that is a Tuesday.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be available.
You're available? All right.
Okay. We'll, we'll get some information out to you sooner than later, so you can peruse through it. Oh.
Well, Vicki and her two cohorts are earning every bit of pay that they're getting from being the Board of Zoning Appeals. And they, they tabled the motion the other day because there's some additional research that needs to be done before any final action is taken. And I, and it's my understanding, Vicki, correct me if I'm wrong, that the next meeting of your board is the same week of the month, if you will, in that Wednesday. So do you know the specific date? Is it July, I had it down here just a minute ago. July twenty-first? Yeah, yeah. So July twenty-first, nine AM, they'll take that issue up again?
Okay. Larry, you have a report?
Yeah. Didn't KAC be liberal, which probably interested you? Southwest Kansas, and there were a lot of people.
A lot of them.
CJ, keep them entertained?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Talented, but, yeah.
But also attended the workshop, would you like to share?
Okay.
I mostly, and I'll try to make it pretty brief, so if Dwayne or Bill want to put the stopwatch on me, that's okay. But there was, at the KCCA, there was a great seminar, or a great breakout on the revenue-neutral rate. And there was a handout on the calculation for the revenue-neutral rate. And, and I'm sure that you threw webinars and stuff, you've been getting that information. But the person who really has it down pat is Ryan Atkinson, who's the Assistant County Administrator in Butler County. And did a great job and really broke it down to where I could somewhat understand it. I don't agree with it, but I could somewhat understand it. That was a great session. But the two things I took away from that is, number one, the resolutions for that revenue-neutral rate, and there, and he has a sample of it, and I think maybe even KAC has a sample, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel about the resolution. And secondly, he recommends that we do the, the RNR is the acronym, hearings during our normal budget hearing time, and that we combine notifications for all the different entities with regard to that. But that, that you would then have your revenue-neutral hearing first, and then your budget hearing second, but you could do it in the same meeting, same day and time. And I wasn't sure that we could do that, but he is, he is absolutely confident we can do that. And then there were some other good sessions, but like I said, the one from HR, she was outstanding and is, is working with certain, or several counties right now as we speak. HR Partners is the name of her firm, and she's out of Topeka. She was, she was outstanding with regard to pay and market and, and evaluations and transfers and demotions and promotions. And just had a wealth of information about the HR thing. Of course, we've got a staff that takes care of that. Some of these counties with three commissioners, no administrator, they're taking care of that. So it was much more meaningful to them probably than to me. Lastly, and Larry and I, they broke out our groups by population of counties, and we had an hour or so together. And what are your common themes, you know, with those counties? Well, housing, childcare, those kind of things. But the other one that came up, and it was referenced earlier today with our public comment, was the state of Kansas with regard to KDHE and the Fire Marshal of getting through the approval process for childcare and so forth and so on. And of course, we've experienced that here for years with the Nazarene Church's daycare childcare facility. But several others were much more adamant about the Fire Marshal than I'd heard anyone speak before, so that was kind of interesting. I was going to ask about the subdivisions. You brought us up to date on that. And I was going to mention the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that's been referenced. That's all that, oh, and then I did speak to the Chamber of Commerce Breakfast and to the Board of Realtors on the sales tax issue last week. That's it. Mr. Chairman? Did I do okay? Three minutes? Oh my, three and a half, three and a half. That's, I think that's a record. Yeah, mark this, mark this day down in the minutes, I had a record time on speaking, so.
One's quicker than that.
Had a Great Plains development meeting. We had our first tax sale ever, cleared ten thousand bucks that came back to us, which we were, did not make us whole by any means, but the state has a huge tax lien against it, gentlemen, so we're pretty darn lucky to get our ten thousand.
Thirty seconds.
I need to add thirty to mine, since you didn't take a full minute. I, I forgot about the workforce one night. We had a annual meeting by Zoom, and I'm hoping that we can be in person starting next quarter.
Too late. After our last meeting, County Councilor Linda and I went over to American Title, where we closed on the piece of property on, at four oh five North Eighth Street. We no longer own that. One thing I did, I made a decision in behalf of the county without your input. Because the buyer financed it, it had to go through a title company. Because the title company charges fees, they had going to assess half of the title company fees to us and the other half to the buyer. And I said, wait a minute, we had a contract for seventy-five thousand minus our share of the taxes. And if the buyer would have paid cash, there wouldn't have been any American Title. So they moved that over and let the buyer pay all of that, so if I'm...
Ate for lunch, didn't you?
Well, saved a little bit. This morning, we had a report from, from Faith Heck, from, from the Nazarene Church. The state came out and inspected things June the ninth, or the sixteenth. To show you about the state, they mailed a report, whoever inspected, to somebody in the state Fire Marshal's office. It was the wrong person they mailed it to. So now that had to be redirected, and they have up to thirty days to get that to the right person. So that's what she, why she's hopeful they can get open on, on the twelfth of July, but it's not a sure thing. I was asked to go to the Register of Deeds, had their state conference and training in, in Garden City at the Eagles, and I went to give them a, an opening welcome. I asked the question, as I started, how many of them knew what year Kansas became a state, since they all deal with, with parcels of land? One lady knew it was eighteen sixty-one. So I asked her, how many counties were there in Kansas in eighteen sixty-one? And she said, nobody knew. That was either thirty or thirty-one. But we've been as high as a hundred and twenty. In fact, Fannie County was not a county until eighteen eighty. And at that point, it was kind of a combination of counties between Sequoia and Buffalo County. And then in eighteen ninety-three, the legislature said, you know, we got a whole lot of counties, and we're going to hereby require that they either have so much population or so much landmass. And poor Garfield County, out in Calvestaway, didn't have either. So that's where it became part of Fannie County, but the name Fannie County was acquired in eighteen ninety-three. So we could share a little history lesson and share that we're a county made up of many parts. That's still going on to this day, because in two thousand seven, Fannie County became a minority-majority county. And that's a whole bunch of parts put together to make a kind of a magnificent county. Wait, while you read that.
I didn't start my clock quick enough, Dave, but I'm working on you.
Okay, well, I don't generally take much time, but today I'm going to need thirty minutes.
I want to harvest wheat. Will you get out of here?
Hang on, just a minute. And then the, attended the Board of Zoning Appeals. To me, it was not a big discussion at the table. There was an action to, I'm picking on you, Vicki. Yeah, so you guys have a cho, have a tough choice. Fannie County Committee on Aging, I had previously given our sales tax presentation to their board of, their committee, plus their staff. But I'm going back over in the morning, because at eleven-thirty, they have friendship meals. And, and we had to plan this, because depending on what's on the menu, that's, that determines the turnout. And tomorrow is, is a favorite on, on the menu. We ought to have a big crowd. So they're expecting up to seventy-five people. And I asked Troy Unruh to accompany me, so we have the city perspective. And then on Wednesday at Rotary, we, we will make the presentation to the handful of folks that attend Rotary, and Deb Weller will help me there. And with that, I also heard from the Lions Club, and they're willing, able, and anticipating our presentation on July, it's Tuesday, July the thirteenth. But I didn't assign anybody yet. I told them there'd be two people there, somebody from the county and somebody from the city. So if any of you would really have a burning desire to go talk to maybe a dozen folks in the Lions Club, let Robert know, and if not, I can cover it, so. Okay, just in case somebody though felt left out, we don't want them left out.
And I do have pamphlets and flyers ready. They're all printed up in my office. If you, if any of you need anything. Okay.
I appreciate that. And with that, is there anything else? Vicki, did you have anything for this group? You sat here presently all day. Sure.
Would like to say that I was a little bit disappointed in the process for the appointee to the Fannie County Economic Development Board. And I think I sent, I did send you a letter stating that, that I've been working toward that goal for many, many years. And I just felt like, you know, for whatever reason, I don't know what reason it was, that I was overlooked, even in spite of being recommended by the Economic Development Board. It just kind of felt to me like a good old boys' club thing, like we called up somebody that we wanted to put on that board. So I just wanted you to be aware of that, and, you know, hopefully something will come up in the future. I did appeal to their board. I don't know what they will do at their meeting tomorrow. But just wanted you to know that I really have been, that has been a goal of mine for a long time. That's why I have served on...
a long time, that's why I have served on so many different things, um, plus, I, you know, I just kind of like volunteering, I like doing these things, but I'm very committed, uh, as far as I'm concerned, anything that I can see, there was no conflict with me serving on the Planning Commission or the Board of Zoning Appeals in addition to being on this board, um, so I don't know if that was investigated or not.
I appreciate your candor, and, and if you're, uh, disappointed, probably is a very generally good term, I, I, uh, I can appreciate your position. We unfortunately don't have a set, set of standards, if you will, for appointing the committees, do we interview them, do we have them do some kind of a presentation, or do we appoint, and so, uh, we get caught up once in a while, maybe a little short on what we should do, so, Larry, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, since I was the person that made the motion, I think you deserve a response from me, uh, you know, number one, I thought maybe that, you know, I didn't wanna take up any more of your time, I knew you were on the Planning Commission, I thought, that's a real time commitment, and I knew with the Economic Development Board, too, that's two big time commitments for somebody, and the other, the person I nominated is retired now and brings the perspective of an architect to the Economic Development Board, so, that, it's nothing slighted against you, Vicki, I, my gosh, you spent more than enough time for public service, I, you know, I, I feel bad that you're, you're taking this so badly, I didn't wanna, you know, I don't wa- I don't like to offend you.
Thank you.
We appreciate what you do, and even though it may not feel like it.
Oh, no, I, I believe that you do, um, appreciate me, it's not that at all, but I just wanted you to understand my position and the fact that there were two of us here who had applied, and we weren't acknowledged or asked to speak, and, you know, maybe we could've kind of shed a little more light on it. I serve because I want to serve, um, the reason that I retired from Fry Eye Associates after thirty-six years was because I wanted to do more volunteerism, um, it's what I enjoy, it's something that I had not been able to do prior, um, to becoming a Realtor, and I'm, I just, I have discovered that my, um, work priorities can be, you know, shifted so that I can spend more time doing this, so, thank you for allowing me to.
I have long said, and I'll say it again right now, and I'll probably say it to you, of, there are all kinds of committees, and most of them are important, but the Planning Commission is one of those highly important ones, and I've been on this board now a little over twelve years, and I can only think of two times when we have voted to do something different than what was recom- recommended to us by the Planning Commission, so, we take a, a lot, we value what you folks send over to us, and that's why I try to attend your meetings when there's a, a county project, so I know what your discussion was.
Thank you, and we appreciate that.
Anything else to come before us? If not, until July sixth, we stand adjourned.